What?
Start over.
Yeah. Say that all again.
No.
Okay, well, I will start. So this is the first of two items that are on the joint work session agenda this evening. First is the West End Revitalization Strategies Plan. And I'm going to kick it off to Rodney Rhodes. We have well over an hour for this item combined for this item in the comprehensive plan.
Nice.
So we're going to get started right away on the West End Plan.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. Mayor Claffey, city council members. We have two very important items in this joint work session today. I thought I was going back through some notes and I realized that almost exactly one year ago, you received a presentation on the Union Town Plan. A very important plan for the city that the city has started to work towards. And that was actually on August 24th, 2023. I tried to get this joint work session for that same day, August 24th, but I didn't get any traction to have a work session, joint work session this Saturday. But the first item is this West End Plan. And revitalizing the city's West End has been a priority of this city council entered the city for several years. However, there's never been a holistic study of the area and a development of strategies to bring about that revitalization. So I believe this was through ARPA funds that the city appropriated last year. And we started this process last summer. We engaged the services of EPR to assist with the creation of this plan. And at this time, I will turn it over to Will Cockrell, who's a senior planner with EPR. He also has other staff here, colleagues from EPR that worked on this project.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. And we're really pleased to be here amongst both groups of council and planning commission. And just really excited to share the plan with you. We are aware that the West End Plan is a large document. I think count Y is about 124 pages. And when you add all the appendices, we're getting a little bit bigger here. So what I'm hoping to do tonight is to help kind of walk you through that and navigate it and then help you all as you review the document and become more familiar with that moving forward. But do you want to think there are many folks up here, here and in the crowd, who were involved with the process and were at those meetings? And it's great to see you again. And I hope the plan here really, it's a nice bookend here with this presentation. So as Rodney had mentioned, going back of council really setting the West End as a priority in Stanton, identified to the Stanton Plan. And going back kind of the COVID years there made it a little difficult for I know with the Brownfield effort and really getting some items moving forward. But really here, aware that there have been other planning processes that were directly on the West End or mentioned the West End. And part of what we were doing is going back and making sure that if you did participate through that earlier process in the Brownfield effort, that that was all pulled in and that was part of this process. So that was important to us, that if you've participated, if you've given feedback on the West End, that is still in the books and still something that we reviewed here. So pulling all that in, this is the first holistic plan for the West End. Earlier on in this process, going back about a year ago, we had met with staff and really tried to identify what measures success for this process. We came up with three items. The first one being to develop a cohesive vision. And we'll talk about the vision statement and the goals that came out of this process. The second item was identify achievable approaches. So really, what is achievable in terms of cost, in terms of logistics? What are some of those? You mentioned lower hanging fruit there a moment ago. So what are those actions we can really get started on and move forward today? Knowing there are some bigger ideas of what the West End can be. And it's great to have those larger visions on the horizon, but we need those incremental steps to get us there. So we need to focus on that. And the third item was to improve the overall quality of life in the West End. And that was really a central piece for the goals, for the actions, objectives, and everything else that went through this process. In terms of engagement, this is where so much of our time went into the engagement side of this effort. We really, going back into the fall, we started with some stakeholder discussions. Do want to also thank SWIBA for being a great stakeholder group throughout this whole process and attending their meetings and them really helping us get the word out on this process. As I mentioned, we went back and reviewed any engagement that had happened in the past on the West End. We wanted to review that, catalog it, and put it into the record with this plan. We had an open house event in January of this year over on the West End. We try to change the locations, but keep them in the study area and keep it as close to the residents as possible and make it as convenient as possible. Anyone who was in that room, it was a little crowded that first night. I think we had like 50 people in a pretty small room. But we got a lot of great feedback there. Moving on, a little bit later, we had a, well, we had a community survey. We'll review that. And again, thank you to SWIBA for helping to get the word out on that survey and really getting to the community there as well. We had a March workshop there where we workshopped ideas and members of the community helped to brainstorm different ideas. Some of you all were there at that meeting. And then a May open house event where we put the community's ideas back out there and tried to prioritize them with feedback. Knowing that not everyone could be there in person for both of those meetings, we did make recordings. So we did recorded versions, special recordings of those and put those online. And we set up ways to provide feedback online as well. So we wanted to make sure that it was accessible as possible going through this. So really, everything you see in the plan really started with the community, the vision statement, the goals. We started with quotes from community feedback. We took all those comments, put it into a large spreadsheet and started piecing together those statements. We had, I know for sure, about 290 people who participated. Those are individuals I could put a name to. We think it's more than that. It could be as many as 320 or more. But especially with the survey, it's hard to track some of that when you're going through an engagement process. When you add all the comments and the people who participated in the earlier processes with the Brownfield grant, that number goes up to possibly over 400. But that, I'm just pulling guesses out of the air on that. But we were very happy with the amount here. We tried to really focus in to have a representative engagement process, make sure that it represents the neighborhoods here. But we reached 4%, which with any planning process hitting 4% of your sample frame is a really good target. So we were happy with that. The other thing that we found in cataloging in the 1,300 comments that we received throughout the process is we started to reach what you might call engagement saturation, where we were hearing the same things over and over again. And that's usually when you've reached the point where you could put more time and resources into engagement, but if you're just hearing the same comments again and again and again, then you've reached your effective level of engagement here. So going forward with an overall overview of the document, we have a vision statement here, which I will review with you. Under that, we have four goals. We have 10 objectives under those goals, almost 30 recommendations. 15 of those, about half have more detail in those. Others, I would say are other, but we still put a fair amount of detail into those as well. The document includes case studies from across the country, from communities that have implemented similar recommendations and how they did that and their outcomes for that. When you add in secondary recommendations, for example, there's one for crosswalks and identifies many different crosswalk locations. When you add those secondary recommendations in, we're looking at over 50 possible recommendations and actions in the document. Again, 124 pages. We really tried to make this document as concise as possible. So I think I mentioned earlier, our original version of the plan was much bigger. And then we really tried to pare it down because we wanted to make sure this was a useful tool for you all as decision makers. Something that is as concise as we can make it and to be useful and easy for you to find what you need. And part of that was putting more information into the appendixes. We have six of those. We added the sixth one late, but that includes funding processes for different grants, different types of examples and resources and agencies and partners, just so that you have that recorded and you can check to that with these efforts or other efforts you might have going on in the future. The structure of the document, we really wanted to work the document around the four main goals. So that was vibrant, commercial corridors, healthy and safe connections, green neighborhoods, and reinvestment and affordability. So rather than have, again, we wanted to make it user friendly for you. Rather than having a large section on demographics and history and a lot of this prelude you have to get through, we tried to move the actions farther up into the document just to make it a little bit easier for you to use. As I mentioned, we really started with that vision statement. I told you kind of a general approach of how we went about creating those vision statements really started with quotes that we received from the community. Had with each one, it might've been two, three pages of community comments. And then we just kept boiling it down again and again until we got to a sentence. We did present the vision statement and the goals at the March workshop. There were really no comments on it, which kind of alarmed me, I would say. Of it's a little strange to not have any comments on it. So kind of kept asking. We put them out there again for the May workshop. We talked, did some discussions with folks in the community. We put out really a second survey, which wasn't really planned in some materials. And there seemed to be consensus on the vision statement and the four goals. And we were really encouraged by that. It's kind of a, for us, kind of a unique opportunity where the community really seemed to be on the same page. But I would say that, again, we reached that engagement saturation point. And the community was oddly on the same page with most of the items across the board. And just from our experience working on so many different small area plans and comp plans across the state, that was one thing that came out really quickly was just how consistent the comments were as we moved forward. So as I mentioned, the document is really structured around the four goals. And I mentioned there's almost 30 recommendations and many more sub recommendations in those. Where possible, we tried to lay out instructions and step by step on how to move those separate actions forward. I'll, I'm going to do a slide on some of those, kind of the higher priority recommendations, which were selected by the community. So for most of these, the community brought up the idea and then the community prioritized them. So the ideas came from the community. They also prioritized them. And then we added more detail. And there's a few actions we might've added in just to hone in on what it was we were hearing. We're going to talk about the different objectives or strategies, one being a program and financial support being one strategy under the vibrant, commercial corridors goal. And then also upkeep and beautification. Those were, upkeep and beautification was very consistent throughout the entire process. We did, we're going to hit on enterprise zones, TIF districts. We did include another recommendation of continue to raise awareness. There are a lot of programs that are already out there. We kept bringing up ideas and staff had mentioned, well, that actually already exists. We just, people want to be aware of that. So clear that that's one area we listed here. We are going to talk about supporting upkeep through private public partnerships. We included a case study of pop-up events. There's a really successful case study out of Pennsylvania, which is a really good example. And then with the entrance corridor, a corridor overlay district. I won't talk about that here. It's mentioned. I'm kind of a, I like to advocate for simplifying codes when you can. I think you can make a more effective ordinance by streamlining it sometimes. But there's some language in here about codes as we talk through them. All right. So first off, the city does already have an enterprise zone program. So what we did here is we documented conditions, infrastructure needs, land uses, and put in here a recommended, recommended boundary for how that enterprise zone might extend into the West End. So we really focused in on the core study area, looked at data from the Brownfield work, and then just our own site visits and data work on infrastructure and land use. Second up, we did recommend in here a tax increment financing tool. TIF districts, you really, you take the property revenue coming from a defined area. As you make investments in the community, those property values naturally increase. And you use that difference in property value and revenue coming in to help finance the capital investments in that area. It's seen as a best practice across the country. Virginia, going back to 1988, from the State Code Act that was adopted then, there are plenty of successful examples there. We included one from Greensboro, South Carolina, of their TIF district and what they experienced and some of the benefits that they saw. So it's a good financing tool. And again, we try to really look at what are, what are actions that are achievable? With the plan, there are many steps involved with establishing a TIF district. This plan knocks out several of the first steps. So we wanted to give you something that moved you along, along the way here on this item. Just looking at recommended boundaries. You want to look at property values and you want to look at where you want to put your infrastructure improvements. And then we put in here also examples across the country of other communities that have used partnerships with public, private nonprofits and how that is really a great opportunity, great way to help reinvest in the community. It's also a great way for the city or the community to find partners to help finance those. Because sometimes those partners can help you with that financing aspect of it. So we did have that in there as well. Next up, we had the healthy and safe connections. This is more of the transportation goal here. This came up quite a bit throughout the process of transportation in the West End, especially with sidewalks. We'll mention here that all these actions are really interlocking pieces. These recommendations are connected and tied to the other actions listed in here. So I'm going to talk about biking pedestrian improvements, but that is closely tied with park access, which is on the next goal, which is also tied closely with some of the community activating recommendations in the last chapter. So all these are really connected, interlocking pieces. First objective is maintain and improve connections. We'll talk about sidewalk and road repair, implementing the bike and pedestrian plan from 2019. Bus shelters, I won't really get into that. I would say that we looked at every single bus stop in the West End. We cataloged whether it had lighting, whether it had a bench, whether it had trash receptacle in place, any other amenities to it, what the pedestrian access is to that bus stop and so forth. In terms of improve public safety, there were comments in here about pedestrian safety in general, walking through the community. So we pulled out crosswalks, community lighting, regular communication with the police department. We did work with the police department through this process. We also included in here SEPTED, which is Prevent Crime Through Environmental Design. It's a very popular approach across the country. We were working in a project in Missouri recently, and I know SEPTED was a big focus of theirs. So that is a good, we described that in the plan as well. And then traffic safety measures. There are a lot of potential funding mechanisms out there to help you with that. So that's a lot of great grants that are available. It's just accessing that. We did partly design the plan here to help you submit for any of those grant applications. So we wanted to give you something that you could use, pull pieces out and put it directly into the grant application, and then you're ready to go. So that was part of our intention. So first up, the action of repair and maintain sidewalks. We looked, did a catalog of the sidewalks across the West End area. Did identify issues, including cracked sidewalks, some sidewalks with vertical separation on those cracks, different maintenance issues, curb cuts, what areas meet ADA standards, what areas have obstacles and so forth. So we did catalog of that. And some recommendations on making those improvements as well as, we took the bike and pedestrian plan, laid it over the study area and broke those pieces up into different segments. So we prioritize those segments based off of the West Beverly Street Corridor and based off of the objectives of providing better park access to Montgomery Hall Park and with Gypsy Hill as well. So we broke those off. Again, the way we broke those off into the profiles is intended to help you with grant applications. You should be able to pull that out, hand it to an engineer or go through the process and be able to have that as a good starting point as you move forward. Crosswalks, we went through, did an inventory of all crosswalks. We also did an inventory of where crosswalks would be effective based off of the objectives in the plan. We also did a catalog of what improvements would need to be made to make those crosswalks possible. So including curb cuts and any potential with sight distance issues or anything else that might exist. As you can see there, we identified plenty of locations across the study area. In terms of street lighting, this one here, there's fairly fresh research out of FHWA that improved street lighting is an important factor with revitalization. It does help with reinvestment in commercial properties. It does help with, there are research, sales receipts and other improvements here. So we wanted to include that, really focusing in on the West Beverly Street Corridor as being a primary area for street lighting. It did, this is one that did come up through the engagement process, but we tried to add a little bit more to this recommendation. And as I mentioned before, speaking with the police department and doing the inventory of the study area of just what can the police continue to do or build on, there are recommendations at the back of this plan under Goal Four of organizing neighborhoods. And there's a good opportunity for the police to have regular communication with the West End neighborhoods, make sure that they're aware of any issues. One concern was if there are any issues that aren't being reported, they can't know, they don't know about it. So how can we do a better job of identifying those issues as we go forward? Apologies for flipping through some of these kind of fast. I know the comp plan discussion is really important. I want to leave some room for that, but I'll go back and answer any questions you have. Next up, we had the Green Neighborhoods goal. Three strategies here, we had improved access to the parks. Yes, the West End has two large parks. And yes, the West End residents greatly value those parks. However, access is an issue. We talked about the sidewalks. We did an analysis of what's a 10-minute walk from those, from those parks. And we took that analysis, overlaid and see what areas have access and which ones don't have easy access here. Also, we looked at incorporating and beautification. Put some case studies here. I'll note that there are a lot of really great grants and funding sources for planting trees. And we did put that in the plan as well for guidance. And then the last one here is preserving natural systems. And knowing that stormwater is an issue in this area in particular, looking at topography. We just got through a big rain event here recently. And so we did put some language in here, just dealing with stormwater and natural systems being a really great approach at helping to mitigate that. Okay, I mentioned a map about the parks. We put that in here, did many different maps here, different scenarios of walkability to those parks. Oops, one of those things, one of those issues that comes up is, you know, the parks are so big that you could live right next to the park, but not necessarily have that park be within walking distance because there might not be an entrance on that side. So I'm looking at Montgomery Hall Park. There's a clear boundary with the railroad track. Gypsy Hill, there's a boundary in that in terms of entrances are mostly on that east side. So we tried to look at what's a good walkable distance. And we looked at the bike pedestrian or the pedestrian network to see what is, you know, safe, walkable distance. Also pointed out with Montgomery Hall Park, there's no sidewalk going to the park. And the only way to get down there, you really have to go across a railroad track. And then there's guardrails and then you're walking into traffic at that point. So we highlighted those areas and that's emphasized in multiple recommendations. Also knowing that sidewalks get you to some point, it makes it more accessible. However, really trying to identify public spaces and public spaces and areas for the community to gather was an important piece that we got reminded of again at the end of the process. The J and D R site, I mean, that's really an opportunity. It doesn't have to be a really expensive, formal space, but just some space, public space where the community can gather. Someone could sit and just be in that space. When we did the survey work, we found that that location showed up as a favorite. Now granted, partly because of the restaurants there. None of those restaurants paid me for this presentation, but that came up as a favorite spot for a lot of the participants right there. And that just seems like an ideal location along the corridor to have some sort of space there from the community. And it does open up more walkable access to the rest of the community of some sort of public space. And it can be small, it can be reasonable, and it can be done on a wide range of approaches. Next up, just looking at the zoning code. There is language in here about unusable open space for residential development. The code doesn't really define unusable open space really clearly. And we put some language in here. There are a lot of examples from other communities of where that open space can serve more of a function, be more of an amenity to the residents in that development. And that's another way of trying to get open space and amenities throughout the community. Granted, it's limited to those residents, but it's at least another option to get those amenities out there. And I mentioned with street trees, we did look at, you know, right of way. Some areas don't have the right of way necessarily to put street trees in. However, others do when you get on the western side of the corridor. I was just working with the community last year in southwest Colorado. We finished our plan process much like this one. And they got a million dollar grant from the Forest Service to plant trees. And so that is, there are resources out there. There are federal, state resources. And we try to include some of those options for you in the plan as well. All right, next up is our, is our fourth goal. And this is our reinvestment and affordability. There were plenty of comments from the community on trying to get resources and help with property maintenance as well as reinvestment in public space. Again, I mentioned there was, there were comments about a place for people to gather. So of course Booker T. Washington came up as well. And then support neighborhood advocacy, at least organizing. And we put a case study in there, again, from Colorado. And I think maybe not to the full extent, but some version of that is a possible approach to helping the, helping some of these neighborhoods get a little bit more organized. So go through and hit on these. There are a lot of resources already out there for residents, resources that already exist. So we included in here some strategies to get the word out on what those, what those programs are. If there are residents out here that need that help, really making sure that they're aware of it. Were you calling a timeout or were you just doing a? Oh, sorry. Lailing. Sorry. We did put in here also Booker T. Washington, Washington. There are, there are uses there, but also onsite, there is a lot of vacant space in the building as well. Really working with communities across the state and country, especially with African-American history tied to this building. It's such an amazing asset for the study area. We included one from the Jefferson School. Actually went over and interviewed the executive director over at the Jefferson School. They have an African-American museum onsite and it's really become a part of the community, not just a place where there's some program, but it's really a community center that draws in the community there. And that's one part of the study area. We really wanted, we really wanted to have a recommendation that really highlighted that part of the study area as well. Because that's an important part that we felt couldn't be left out. Did include just some references to others. There's the COWFEE School in the town of Pulaski here in Virginia, a different approach. You could even look at Montgomery County around Blacksburg. There's a great school project that was done there. So you could go any number of directions. There was a study done before looking at this site and we referenced that here. Also, in terms of, we included an arts initiative. We provided a case study example. Also in terms of, we included an arts initiative, we provided a case study example that there are so many great artists in, in this city and really trying to take advantage of that. Again, this goes back to that public, private and other partnerships where really working with other groups, you can accomplish so much more than what you could by yourself because you're helping to pull from other resources and other people's energy to get that work done. We try to make sure that all the actions in this plan aren't just the city shall do this and the city should do this, that, but also what can the community do? What are some community actions? What, what can the community really help contribute and be part of this to help move the West End forward? So that was our very fast world tour of it. So with that, I do want to also thank city staff, we're, we're great with this and they had really helped us along this and we had a committee internally and really helped make this plan a better document and helped push us along the way to make sure that we got you all a quality document here. So the community was great through the whole process. Really the thing that struck us is the positivity of when, when Nancy Etro, who's with our office and spent a ton of time on this plan, and also we have Phoebe here too, who also was a big contributor. And that was, one of the things that they had mentioned was there's a lot of positivity in, in these comments here. So we were really encouraged by that. We're encouraged about the consistency of that feedback and the, really the consensus around that vision and goals and of their ideas, which we hope we represented here in the plan.
Let me just start out by asking the planning commission if they were aware of this document and if they are aware of anything that, this is a, a work session, you know, and how can we implement this? What, what do we need to do to make this, this work session beneficial? We have a document. He's just spent the last 30 minutes telling me what's in the document. We're all aware of that, but that's not our point. Our point is, you know, how, how does it come from paper to reality? And, and that's why we've invited you all here tonight. So I know it's, it's tough after 30 minutes listening to what all has been accomplished, but what needs to happen next? What can we help you all do? What can you point out problems that you all see that we need to work on? And the crowd roars.
That was actually one of the things that, that, that I wrote down, listening to this stuff. I, I think there's some great ideas, but, but one of the questions I had is what is the actual mechanism to, to incorporate into planning? Do we, do we incorporate it into the comp plan and, and, you know, and then how do we use that in, in guiding decisions that we make, you know, going forward? So that was, that was one of the things I wrote down as well.
Good. And we do know the comp plan's coming up and that's why we want to start having these joint meetings so that we're all working in the same direction. But I'm open and amenable if anybody is aware of something. Joe, go ahead.
Let me comment because I, I probably feel like I've been involved as far as the West End has been concerned since back 2019, even before that, in that I had the opportunity to spend time listening to Michael Oregon, who had visions for the West End. And he and I would go to Harrisonburg to a faith-based group that we both belong to and I would listen to his ideas and he would tell me what he kind of envisioned as far as the West End was concerned. And with that, he would use me as a sounding board. And so when he initiated the Western Alliance, it, I attended out of respect to, to him and really didn't have a lot of interest as far as the West End. But over time, that alliance did not work out. It did not work out because it was not, it didn't have the organization, didn't have officers, didn't have committees. It just had people who were interested in the West End. So it eventually disappeared. It was after that period of time that I, I did get interested in the West End and I made an effort to, in 2019, to approach seven businesses in the West End as to whether or not they'd be interested in having a, a plan, a, a Western Business Association. And to, to, to all of them, their credit, they decided that, that yes, they did want to do that. So we began to form an association as some structure to it. We had officers, we had, we, nonprofit and we grew into a very significant group that has, still exists and still exists on a great, a great level, simply because the people that are interested in it are interested in it because they, they, they know that the possibilities are, are helpful and, and can grow. And to the city's credit, the city has also taken an interest as far as the West End is concerned. And when it was announced that, that the Juvenile Courts facility would be located out there, this was just a really something that was going to stabilize the West End. And it has given the Western Business Association even more purpose to our, our way of approaching it. And so we've had some very capable people who have served as officers and board members of the Western Business Association. And we continue to expand on this. What is being presented here, I think, is, is a real professional way of coming up to how to address the needs of the West End and broken down into the different categories that has been presented. And I think that I'm, I'm especially pleased to see this approach being made and I'm, I'm very interested in, in having a copy of the presentation tonight because I think it, it can be used in a very constructive way.
It's thorough. But all right, out of the 85 members that you have in the Western Business Alliance, is there any consistent messages that they mention that something that needs to be addressed? Is there anything that we can do to assist them?
I think, I think infrastructure is one, one of the things that I think they are interested in doing. They're thinking that with that will come new businesses and new investment. And I think that the fact that there is a, a, there is something bigger than just the Stan and West End Business Association. There is this group, this direction, the consulting that's being offered on a professional basis. I, I think it would be a good opportunity to, at, at one of our board meetings to, to have this information to be, to be shared so that it begins generating a kind of thought process. I know that Adam and I know that Alice have been very involved as far as the West End is concerned. So I think that it's, it's very relevant. So I'm, I'm thrilled by what we're talking about tonight.
When you say infrastructure, is there any particular phase there? Lighting, is it flood control? I mean, I know four years ago, we, we were inundated by some horrible floods and we've sunk some money into that and we've, we survived five inches last week in the last hurricane. And I kept driving around town looking and I was very, very pleased with what happened. I mean, because we survived without anywhere near the damage that we had several years ago. So I mean, that, that's been a payoff, but is lighting a big issue?
Well, I would add that I think it's part of the complete streets idea of investing in West Beverly corridor in terms of creating a sense of community and improving pride in your community with street trees, street lighting, a complete sidewalk network. So I think it's all part of the picture.
And a, a big part of it in the, the meetings I was, I was walkability, ability to safely get from your house down to a place of business without having to get into a car. Because the feeling was a lot of this was developed in, in time periods when that wasn't a priority on that. So it's, it's more difficult to put it in after the fact, but that's part of a multi-stage.
And I, I'll note, I think my favorite part of this plan already is the image that shows the two tremendous assets we have in Gypsy Hill Park and Montgomery Hall Park and how pathetic walkability is to those two assets.
Yeah.
And just in terms of low hanging fruit, that's something that can really expand access to green space and recreational amenities for our community.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's unique as far as the West End is concerned. And only two parks that are accessible, two schools that are accessible, two, a fire department. These are all infrastructure things that are part of, I think, of a, of a community. It doesn't have to, doesn't have to start from scratch. It's already in existence. Let's see what we can do with those elements and make it into, you know, make it into a desirable place to live and a desirable place to do business.
Right. I, I think, I think one of the important pieces that, that Mr. Cockrell highlighted was the ability to, to take these things that they've identified and use them specifically to go after grant and funding opportunities. And you, and you take, you take this piece of the plan, you use that for your application and, and you don't have to spend all this time and staff effort to, to compile new data and say, you, you've got it and this qualifies for this grant, let's go get it. I think, I think is really helpful.
I think it's also going to help, Mr. Mayor, that, that plan identifies 29 recommended actions and 15 of them are high priority. So if I were looking at this and we're going to start to work on it, I'd be looking at those 15 and I'd be getting together with the business community and saying, okay, how can we organize which one of these we do first and second? And can we do several of them at the same time? And we have Union Town, we did the plan before and they've got some of the same kinds of things in that plan. And what's going to happen when we get to the comp plan is each of these plans is part of it. It's going to be adopted eventually as part of that plan. And so we can look at the, at the city as a whole and we'll know some of the focal points in some of these neighborhoods where we need to look at the infrastructure, whether it's the lighting or whether it's the safe streets or the sidewalks, because there are issues in the West End and there are issues in Union Town and we can all name a few other places. But they're, they need to get fixed and that's what the update I hope will do. It's going to help set priorities for some of these things and help us figure out how we do it. Because when you get a list of 29 or 15 things to do, it's, it's hard to know where to start. And it, it's going to take some further effort to figure out which is next or which should be first.
Oh, I'll go after.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify with Adam, make my friend, make sure that I understood his talk about, you know, the accessibility. Is it simply because of entry points or is it because of Stanton's wonderful flat topography?
This is, it's a, it's a five minute and a 10-minute walk time based on existing entrances and existing sidewalk facilities. So it's a combination of entrance locations, lack of, or gaps in the sidewalk network and the significant barrier of the railroad against Montgomery Hall Park.
Okay, all right.
And can I just add to that because?
Anytime, Alice.
So as I'm, I'm just going to share a story here and let you know how long this has been going on because we talk about the connections and there is no connection. I used, I used to visit before I moved here as a child and we used to walk from the Johnson Street area to Montgomery Hall Park. And how did we have to walk? Either in the roads or as kids, we walked on the tracks. So it's nowhere.
Of course.
We did. We walked on the tracks. I mean, that was just obvious and to get to Montgomery Hall Park. So I'm not telling my age, but it's been a long time that there has been a gap, a walkable gap from that area, that whole area to Montgomery Hall Park. And it's no, it's a sidewalk now, but it's still, it's some gaps in there that need to be fixed. So that's the healthy and safe connection part that is in this document, which we have to go back and see which ones are we going to do first. And we know that we had started some of those sidewalks, the gaps on the West End further up, but how can we come back down to and see if we can work those together?
Excuse Mayor Claffey, can I?
Yes.
One of the things that, that came up in, in the, in the plan was beautification. And beautification comes up for, you know, just desirability of the neighborhood, it raises property prices, it just attracts people to that area. I remember when we did the, we heard the presentation from Frazier Associates about the entrance corridors. And I remember Mr. Frazier saying that many communities will offer matching grants and we talked about that, matching grants to businesses to beautify, to upgrade their facade, to put in flowers, bushes, whatever it is that they need to do to upgrade the, the look of their business. And so I wondered if perhaps SWEBA could partner with economic development, the businesses meet with that staff and talk about a loan fund or a matching grant type of a program where maybe low interest. I'm just throwing that out there to think about how businesses are, would be able to do that without too much of a burden.
The question I had.
Go ahead.
For Adam, basically, is with the sidewalks, I'm just filling it out there, being having the connection for VDOT, is there anything that we can, I mean, having sidewalk gaps that, that make it maybe a better shot at getting funding from VDOT for certain things like that? I mean, I'm just asking.
No, there, I mean, funding opportunities do exist.
Yeah.
Specifically for those needs.
Okay.
So it's another thing in here that I wanted to, you know, just highlight. It's the reinvestment and affordability. We see that some areas are being reinvested in, but is it affordable? And that is another thing that is, you know, that you see and we, when we talk about affordable housing, that is something that is, isn't affordable because they're reinvesting in properties and homes and they're restructuring their, but they're not affordable. And I know that there's not much, sometimes there's not much we can do, but I know that should be something that we as a city can take into consideration in the areas that people live in. So when you go and talk about reinvestment and redoing homes, but you're going into neighborhoods where that's happened before, you're pushing people out because it's not affordable. So that's another thing that, you know, we can look at too.
All right, I'm going to hurry everybody along here because the second item here for our joint work session with the planning commission is a discussion of the comprehensive plan review and update. And I know we went about 15 minutes there about that first one, but, but that's, it's fine. You know, that's what we're here for because that's what we're trying to get these talks started so that we can get somewhere, so.
I think this will be the piece that helps make what we just heard actionable.
Yes.
So yeah, I don't think it'll take as long as we had actually budgeted for, so I'll go ahead and let Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on to the comprehensive plan, I would note that, um, obviously we had some good discussion here about the Western plan. It's got a lot of good ideas. It had a lot of community support during the process. The next step is to adopt that plan. And there's different processes you can go through to adopt that plan, but that has to come from city council. It could be adopted as appendix to the comprehensive plan and go through the public review process and the planning commission. So that is something that I, I know you haven't had time to thoroughly digest that plan over the weekend, you know, the past four, five days. And certainly the public hasn't either. And we'll have it online. I'm sure Mr. Knight will push it out there for people to go and look at that. But maybe at your next city council member, a city council meeting, consider, um, sending it to the planning commission as, to be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. Of course, we will take aspects of it and put in the conference plan and the goals and objectives also. But it may be nice just to have this also an appendix. This is the same thing you did for Union Town.
Right.
And it may, may help with grant applications too.
I don't, you don't need to come back to us. I think we can turn that over to Ms. Bogard, Ms. Coleman, and get that worked into the, uh, agenda as needed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we have to do legally to, to, to start that process.
It's fine.
Real quick, um, we have also engaged services of EPR to help the city, um, up, review and update our comprehensive plan. We have already started that process. And, um, this is a kickoff meeting to get some direction from city council and the planning commission before we start having those monthly meetings with the citizens advisory committee. And I'll turn it over to Will once again.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to see you. I'm going to talk as little as possible here. And if I'm talking too much, give me a timeout signal and I will, I will stop.
Nothing like this.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just jump straight into it. Just, this is our agenda going through, um, you know, comprehensive plans in Virginia. As you already know, but anyone else in the crowd, comprehensive plan is the primary policy document in local government. In Virginia, it is required, uh, document. It really, uh, it creates a, uh, a tool for the planning commission and for the elected officials. It is the legislative to-do list for them. It should be the starting point for any changes to the codes, to any investments, programs and initiatives. And really with a comprehensive plan, what we're trying to do is set a vision and then also put in place what are the mechanisms needed to make that vision happen, to move that forward. Uh, Virginia, not every state requires a comprehensive plan. Virginia does. Not every state requires that it be reviewed every five years. Virginia does. So we're, we're right in that, that five-year review mark, um, as we're getting, uh, getting this process started. I'm going to keep jumping ahead. The existing comprehensive plan, um, has 11 chapters in it. Pretty, you know, it's, it's a sizable thorough, uh, plan there. I think when we, we did some questioning ahead of time with, with you all as a group to identify, um, uh, kind of a good starting point, my intention is get straight to discussion here after just two slides here. One question is how would you rate the existing comprehensive plan in terms of its usability? And it was perfect bell curve, actually. Kind of the issue that came up, uh, there was comments of, you know, uh, we want to compliment the community who worked on this plan and staff and everyone else. However, um, in terms of the size of the document of, I, I had a lot of please, can you make this more concise? And then something that's usable and gets to the point is the P here. So, uh, really shorten the document was the main comment. Make it easier to navigate. There are comments that hear about electronic version, maybe even a PDF you can navigate through to get to the answers you need as decision makers. Replace text with images as much as possible. Make sure that the community can understand the plan as well. Summarize information and armor the detail. The appendix is a great place for that. And also the actions should be really achievable. Vision's great. Big ideas are great, but it needs to be achievable. So that, that was the feedback we got so far. But, uh, back to the mayor, I would like to hear just any other feedback. I realize that, um, this is the beginning of the process. However, this is a critical point in that process because this is the, this is the period that sets the direction, the trajectory for the rest of the plan, is what you all envisioned for the process and what you envisioned for the document. Comprehensive plans, they should pivot along the way as we hear from the community. It should be community driven, but it's this initial trajectory you set, which is incredibly important.
We turn it back over to the planning commission and, and ask them, is there anything that you all would like to see us inject as a, as a starting point?
I would actually like to see your participation as a group and as individuals throughout the process. When we have, if you have questions for us, that you submit them to us, you know, send them through Rodney and we'll get the questions. We can answer them. I'd also like to see you participate in the, um, community efforts when we have them, you know, the open houses. I like the process that we've used here for the, um, first the West, the Union Town plan and now the West End plan where you have community input at various points. That's essential if you're going to do good planning. You never know when somebody's going to come up with some really good idea or some really good solution for some knotty problem. Um, and they help you identify the parameters and they let you know what the priorities are, which is going to help when it comes to trying to decide what you do first. I thought the description that, um, Mr. Cockrell gave was a very good one as to what the plan is supposed to do and where it comes from. We've had a plan for years and it's been helpful. What I, what we've talked about either at various times over the years is changing the future land use map because it needs to be updated in places. There are some things that need to be adjusted. And we've talked about shortening the plan and we've talked about making some parts of it appendices. And I really like to hear the suggestion that he had with the West End plan was demographics gets moved to the, an appendix. It's there, it's available. But if you want to call up the plan and really see what it says, you've got the plan. And then if you want to find out where that came from, where that idea, you can go look at the demographics. It's also a marketing document. If we have people who want to move a business to Stanton and we have people who want to come into Stanton Crossing, that's something that you can say, well, look at our comp plan and you can see where our city's going. So I think it's, that's what I see and what I've collected from others over a while. Fishners?
So, sorry. So with, with that in mind, in, in recognizing that the comp plan is, is the roadmap to guide our current and our future leaders over the next five, 10, all the way to 2040, I think is what it, is what it says now. So that's, it's really defining the direction of the city. We're going to have a pretty significant say in, in how this document gets created because being part of the advisory committee. But I guess what I'd like to do is sort of start out, could you give us your roadmap? You know, what's, what's in, you know, sort of even individually, your vision for the next five, 10, 20 years of the city? And then what would, like, what would your objectives, your main objectives be to get to that vision? Is, if that, does that sort of make sense, the question?
It does.
Kind of give us some guidance as to how you want us to, to proceed.
How would you best want to get that? Just, um, when we come participate in meetings, one-on-ones?
A, any of the above, if anybody's got some thoughts now. Or, you know, just, again, before we embark on this 12 to 18 month process, I guess I want to get started on the right foot and not come back and go, what is this? You know?
I, I think we're all concerned about the housing, the affordable housing situation.
100%.
And I guess we're seeing some development currently around the city. And, uh, you know, we, we often talk about our population was stagnant for a long time. We had approximately 25,000 people in 1970. We have a little bit less than 26,000 in 2024. So therefore in 50 years, we haven't grown much. And, and we want to be able to grow because if you're not growing, you're dying. So we want to be able to grow the city. And I guess where we are seeing the growth that in the current time is during, with apartments, townhouses, uh, that type of housing. And I guess, uh, I'm hearing from some developers that it's difficult to build a single family dwelling and make it affordable and, and do it on a small lot. And, and what we have left in Stanton to develop unfortunately is not rolling acres. So, so we, we probably need to be looking at multiple doors in a, uh, single roof.
So i, if I may, on that line, thinking about exactly what you're saying, is the, when you talk growth and the city itself can't really grow in acreage. I mean, we're, we're kind of left with what we're, we have, we have a boundary.
Our land law, we cannot annex, yes.
And there's only, I mean, a good chunk of that is already developed into something. Now, of course, we can look at redevelopment, this, that and the other. But when we think about what's left of, you know, the, 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 the bits and pieces, are we, when you think growth, is it residential growth? Is it commercial growth? Is it industrial growth? And I realize that there's, you know, pockets of, for each.
All of the above.
But what would be?
One plays off the end.
Well, but what would be the primary objective? Are we trying to get more people or are we trying to grow business-wise?
Dan?
Yeah.
And Scotty? You, you understand because both of y'all came before the three of us. And, um, that has been a driving force in every, uh, meeting we've done when it comes to trying to get membership on our committees, especially planning, especially, you know, some of the, the EDA. We have always said, at least I know the three of us and I think now the seven of us, it's very important for this city to grow. We would love to see Stanton Crossing absolutely packed. We would love to see it full of, of some kind of businesses that are bringing in tax dollars. I said it in my thing that it got onto that. And I think I made a stream, it's kind of basically saying, uh, thank you Martin Luther. I have a dream. I have a dream that, that Stanton Crossing is full. I have a dream, dream. And when we were hoping, when we made the decision to put the courthouse out on the West End, that it was going to inspire other businesses, other restaurants to come to that area and start that growth. And when that growth of businesses start and we get more, uh, industrial or whatever the commercial businesses out on in Stanton Crossing, it's going to start bringing in people. Well, guess what? When you start bringing in people, then the city has to be able to supply the infrastructure, the, the sewer systems, the water systems. And with that, we, with people, we've got to be able to have, uh, the housing to supply, to, to house all these people. And with all of that, and any city, if it doesn't grow, dies. Now, there's a lot of people in Stanton, they say, well, I don't want our city to get too big. Well, if you don't let it get to grow, it will become stagnant. But all along, when you have that growth, when you have the business growth, you have the industrial growth, you have people coming in, guess what it brings? Dollars. And that's what this city lives off of.
Right. Spend their tax base.
I know I'm heading up, shut up.
Mayor Claffey, I'll just add to that.
That was, that was great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, sorry. Recently I was looking at the demographics of the city. I don't know where, but I, I saw that the fastest growing age demographic is the 65 and older. And we're slowly but surely becoming a retirement community. And so that is, that is really the definition of, of the city dwindling. So if young families don't see something in Stanton to either stay here or move here, then truly it will just continue to be, um, a retirement community. An aging community. And so I, I would like to see an emphasis on, um, things that draw out young families. And of course, we've talked about our parks and of course, we'll be talking about our schools later. But, um, those type of businesses.
But if we have commercial, if we have commercial ventures able to come and set up quickly in this city and, and make a, a living and make a business out of it, that's, they're going to need people to staff their stores and to come and use their stores. And that's, that's part of the tax revenue basis as well. They all interlock.
Sure. It does. It's.
Can I say one other thing? And I, the, I talked about our planning commission and everything, but this is more directed at our city manager because I have said that all along too, Steve and I and Amy and all along. We, Billy is now gone, has retired, but we need to get people in those positions. And I've said it, that go to bed at night, get up in the morning, think about it all day long. Who can I come into this position? Where can I get the next business? Because we are getting our clocks cleaned in certain cities around us. We've got to get somebody that's all they think about. They live it, they eat it, they drink it. Just how do I get businesses here?
I've been part of, uh, the planning commission for, uh, uh, well, almost eight years now. And I don't recall ever having what we're doing here this evening of a joint get-together where you have an opportunity to put your mind and your purposes to, uh, bigger goals. I, I don't know that we have a, a plan that is, hasn't been, uh, developed that will allow us to, um, reach, whether or not it's in five years or 10 years, reach, uh, what we're looking for. I, I hear we're, uh, haven't grown as a city to really speak of in, um, many years. And, uh, and what, what does that mean? Well, if someone says we're turning into a retirement community. And I think, uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm encouraged, let's put it that way.
One thing I'd like to say is I, I think too that we have to be, of course, there needs to be guidelines and restrictions. We want that to keep Stanton the way, to keep Stanton, Stanton. But we also want to be very mindful of, you know, what we're, what we're talking about there. Because if we have such, you know, tight guidelines or restrictions or, you know, whatever, you know, the zonings and all that kind of stuff, we have to be able to adapt and adjust. Because what I see a lot of times is sometimes it makes it more difficult for businesses to come to town. It makes it more difficult for builders to build, you know, new homes. And again, I mean, when you talk about reality, I mean, it's fine on paper, but in reality, is it going to work? And what are we going to do to make sure that we're doing all we can to help make it work for the people that really need it?
We can develop guardrails as much as anything to say, okay, if we can stay in this lane.
Yep.
That's what we want.
But still promote. And businesses is what I'm, the loudest voice at least that I've heard so far.
We need revenue, yeah.
At the same time, businesses will bring, you know, the workers. And we need people that, you know, are going to.
We need people that won't come to Stanton, excuse me. Aside from going to Waynesboro, Augusta County.
To that end, we need to be sure the guardrails aren't too close together a lot of the time. One, one thing I, I was on the planning commission for years before council. And, and one thing we would run across a bit is the Ag Forestal districts. And one of the peculiarities of Virginia, uh, that I, I don't know that I ever was able to make my parents understand that I don't live in a county. I'm in a city, not a county on that. And that the city has to, you know, take land from the county to grow. So in the last time that we were able to annex land, we got a lot of cows. And so we have to, so there's different views on Ag Forestal. Some people feel it's green forever. You know, it, it should be treated as a park. Other people think that's in storage and a tax shelter for when the land is worth it to develop. It's something we need to look more closely at.
Okay.
It's just sort of in a holding pattern. That was my comment on this, on this thing there as well too. But those are the areas, uh, that would be later expansion. You know, that we have areas like Crossing that we're moving into and moving forward with. But going forward in the long term, we need to look more closely at that and get a better guidance on what we're, what we see for those areas.
Thank you.
Hey, Leslie, can I ask a question? And it's, maybe it's just a rumor that I've heard. No, no.
Get the popcorn.
No, I just, is there a, have, is there, uh, down the? Is there a, have, is there, uh, down the road in several years or coming up, is there another possible opportunity for negotiation with the county, whatever, for gathering land, trade-offs?
You mean with the, in terms of annexing?
Yeah.
No.
Good.
I mean, I'm looking at our attorney, but I mean, I'll let him speak to that.
Well, I just, I did heard that there was a coming up.
I haven't heard.
Maybe I'm wrong. I, I mean, I'm just asking. People say things and I, that's, you know.
Fall for it.
Just, just to clarify, the annexation moratorium is still in effect in Virginia.
Okay.
Now, I, you know, obviously that can change with legislative sessions. Um, clearly that's a potential. Um, but I'm not aware of any, um, ongoing quote unquote friendly annexation talks or anything of that nature.
Okay.
And it's been that way since eighty-seven.
Oh, I, I, I know. I mean, you know.
See, we're in a time that things are forever changing. We're in twenty twenty-four, and we can't stay the same. So what Mr. Mills was just saying, he never seen this happen before. This is happening now, because these are changing times, and we're just looking out for our future, our present now and our future, and we're looking out for the younger generation. Before, I think people was just looking out for where they are at that time. But we have to realize that to order to grow, we need to have the younger generation and after them and after them that want to be here. It's not just for us, it's for them. So we have to do this now. And collaboration, I could speak, I think, for all of us that that is one of the things that we want to do is collaborate and be in community and focus and have all of these discussions going forward and not being separate, but coming together and working together. And that will, that makes a world of difference if we can just work together.
A vision that we can, can agree upon. And that in turn allows, uh, for, uh, purposes and direction. You need leaders, and that's the other thing that is so relevant, I think. And we're very fortunate. I think we have very good qualified people who are in, professional people like Council members like yourselves, planning commissioners like ourselves, that, uh, uh, are willing to make it a passion for the future.
Thank you.
I was gonna, if, if you allow time, I was gonna go through the last bit here, really warp speed.
Please.
And just give you some more results of talking to you all as a group of some of your higher priority topics you hit on. Uh, it was interesting, we provided, I just got, got feedback, land use, housing, um, on here, uh, you know, the group identified in further detail, economic development is one that, uh, came up quite a bit, infrastructure, um, housing choices, uh, zoning was an issue, uh, some zoning reform and that streamlining processes. So really just some of the topics that, that came out, um, of feedback here to finding success of just really reaching as many people as possible, bringing awareness of the plan, working, uh, with communication, outreach strategies, uh, that reaches as many people and a representative group of people as much as possible. Uh, measures of success for the plan, uh, hearing from the group of the concise document, user-friendly, there's some common themes, inclusive, intentional, successful engagement, really getting community support on the back end of this. Um, I'm trying to get to the next steps, uh, quickly here, uh, really trying to recruit a wide variety of stakeholders in the process. Theme here, keep the plan concise. Looking forward to, to get started, and we are too. And just to, uh, give you an idea of just next steps here, I, I think, uh, the, the steering committee is meeting in September, uh, September coming up. So we are getting started, uh, here right of, uh, right away. Um, with that, I know with them meeting and the, the planning commission here as we get started on public engagement, we would like to, to get that started as quickly as possible. I think we can get, um, the first community meeting in here, uh, early spring of moving that ahead and pushing that forward as much as possible as we look forward. The biggest effort here is public engagement. We do have plans for our project website, which would take a, an interactive website format, which we're going with, working on, um, on social media and communications on this. Do have a survey slated for this as, uh, as well. We, we would love to get as many, uh, comments on that as possible. As a group, elected officials in planning commission, any stakeholders you think are critical that should be included in this process, that is, that is an initial ask for us, because we want to identify who those stakeholders are and begin to talk to them. Uh, we are going to be using quite a bit of data as we move forward, um, and, uh, use that data to identify what the community's needs are, uh, as we move forward with that, uh, identify a citywide, uh, vision statement, and then the goals per chapter as we move forward, and then really, um, identify exactly what are those chapters? And how do we order and kind of, uh, put our attention on different chapters? We're going to get attention to all chapters, but really, what are we going to hone in on? I, we see this as the beginning of this dialogue, not just a one-time dialogue and then we're done. We're going to keep working with you as we move forward on this. This is a kickoff here. Uh, want to make sure that, uh, with the goals, it's not just goal statements, but there's something tangible here. So something of, here are some tools, here are some approaches, and you're mentioning economic development on there of what are some time-tested approaches that we've seen across the country? And what are some national trends that are going to affect, um, Stanton? Because many times, these forces that are affecting, uh, demographics are much bigger than Stanton. They are national trends that are happening. So how do you move with those trends? And then, uh, working with our group on pulling together the plan. We intend on developing this plan piece by piece by piece. So with every step, here's new pieces of the plan being developed, reviewed, and then we move on to the next step. So it's not a, you don't see anything till the end of the process. It's here's a piece, here's a piece, here's a piece, and we keep building it like a puzzle as we go along. So really getting stuff in front of you as quickly as we possibly can. Typically comprehensive plans, uh, you know, take eighteen months, uh, general. We do tend on, uh, moving quick here and jumping into this and trying to move that, um, kind of a quick start here, jump into the engagement as quickly as possible. As I mentioned before, not having a plan that you see just at the very end, but here are components of the plan, building along the way as we, we move that forward. So that was my big flurry.
Good deal.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for the presentation, and we were off and running.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
All right. And I want to thank the planning commission again for being here tonight. And do you have any party awards? You want to go to a concert? Are you going to a concert tonight?
Thank you for inviting us. We really like this joint. We'd like to keep you up to date. We like to hear your ideas and to start us off as you have, and I appreciate all your time and effort and willing to fit us into your work session.
No, it's a pleasure for the interaction. I really enjoy it.
Yeah, thank you guys.
We should have done this before now. But thank you all again, and everybody, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your work.
We look forward to working with you on the, on the comp plan.
Yeah, we'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mayor Claffey, real quick, um.
I'm adjourning the planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, real quick, Mr. Blair will have a resolution for city's council's consideration at your next regular meeting, um, to initiate the process of adopting the, the West End plan.
Okay, at the next meeting.
Excellent.
But that will go through the public review process at that time.
Thanks, sir. Good night, and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is the, uh, update from the general registrar, Kristi Lindhoss, regarding the November general election. Ms. Bogart.
Okay, not wasting any time, I'm going to ask Ms. Lindhoss to give us a really super quick overview of the upcoming election.
Welcome.
Really fast.
You're, you're fine. You're fine. You, you tell us what you got to tell us.
All right.
Welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you for having me. So, um, we're just touching on the election that's coming up in November. It is intending to be a big one. Um, it'll be my first presidential election, so I'm excited. I'm ready to go. Um, this year on the ballot, we are going to have, of course, the president and vice president, senate, US senate, US representative, city council, and school board. Um, for the city council, there are four open seats. We currently have five folks that have qualified for the ballot, and for school board, three open seats and three qualified candidates. Um, so basically for the past, I guess, two months since the primary ended, I have been working to update all of our procedures and election day forms to accommodate the high volume, to make sure everything goes seamless. Um, I finally got a second part-time hire. Thank you. And so I am working with her to get her ready for the big day, make sure she is prepared for the, uh, chaos that may ensue, but hopefully not. Um, I've also been working with my electoral board, this is Shannon Grog, the chair of my board, um, to fine tune the processes, to make sure everything stays secure, to eliminate any opportunities for errors or mistakes, the little things, making sure we're training all of our officers of election to the best of our abilities. There are always going to be little questions and rare occasion type of situations, especially coming into presidential, because a lot of those folks vote every four years and that's it. Um, so to touch back on the fact that we are a retirement community, I have reached out to all of the nursing facilities in the area, helped to make sure that they are registered to vote, since a lot of them move in from the county, other states, whatever, making sure they're set up, and they are also able to sign up for absentee ballots to be mailed to them, if that's more accommodating. If they want to come to the polls, we set up dates with the activity directors to make it easier for the folks to come to the polls, either during early voting here in, in city hall or at the polls themselves. Um, we are seeing about an average of twenty new or updated registrations coming in every day. Most people are filing online through the Virginia Department of Elections or through DMV when they update their driver's license. And absentee requests are about five to 10 a day. So we're currently at eleven hundred absentee ballots that will go up by mail. I would foresee by the deadline that we'll have probably fifteen hundred at least go out by mail. Um, we currently have eighteen thousand, seven hundred and six voters, and historically we have about seventy percent turnout. No one has a prediction for twenty-four. The, um, secretary of the electoral, state electoral board, she kind of was like, oh, I think it's going to be low. I don't think we're going to have the huge turnout, but there's really just no prediction. Um, so in twenty twenty, which was an odd year due to COVID, we had sixty-five hundred voters come into city hall and vote during early voting. I don't think we'll have that many based on statistics through the years. I'd say we'd have about three to four thousand. Um, so we are working to get everything ready out here. I'm hanging some signs to make it a little more noticeable, because again, we have moved. Thank you again. I'm very happy about the move. I love my new space. So I have a vision of how I want things set up out front, but it's kind of trial and error to see how it goes, um, and how many people we actually have coming in. Early voting will start on September twentieth, and it will run through Saturday, November second, and we are available from nine AM to five PM every day, Monday through Friday, and the two Saturdays prior to election day. Um, and we are still working on some details as to other additional curbside voting spots that might be a little more accessible for both us employees and for the voters themselves, especially if there's bad weather or anything weird like that. Um, if you want an absentee ballot by mail, you have to apply by October fifteenth, and you have to update your registration by, oh, I'm sorry, October twenty-fifth for the ballot and October fifteenth to update your registration. And that's it.
How many, how many voted in the last presidential election? I know you said sixty-five hundred of them.
It was about a seventy percent turnout. And I believe at that point, we had more like sixteen thousand to seventeen thousand voters.
So at this eighteen thousand figure, that's going to be the largest amount ever? Registered voters?
Presumably, yeah. We, we increase every year for registered voters, yes.
Great.
From the time I started this, writing out this paper four days ago to today, it was fifty people higher.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Well, good, good. And how many places do you think you're going to have out here in the hallway?
What I'm thinking for the actual voting privacy screens, I believe I'll have two standing booths, and then because of my lovely counter space now, I believe I'll make two more there just for overflow, for spots that we do get extra busy. It's more than just a couple people.
Good, good.
We are hoping to line folks down, unfortunately, in front of the assessor's office, not on the other side that has the restroom and the elevator. So I'm hoping by hanging signage and moving folks that way, I'm going to have enough employees to accommodate telling folks, hey, just come over this way. We'll get you, you know, we'll get you checked in here.
Well, we'll talk to the assessor fellow in a minute.
Yeah, I, I know. I think he'll be all right.
He's not going to be busy until January.
Yeah, but at least we're not in between taxes now. So that is absolutely fabulous.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing to get ready, and I, I know it's going to be a big, big time, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you. I'm excited. Yep, thank you.
Appreciate everything. Anything we can ever do to help you, please, please contact Leslie.
Did everyone see the executive order that was issued by the governor?
Paper.
Executive Order thirty-five, talking about LNA testing logic and accuracy and how we need to keep the election secure. Stanton is in compliance with everything. We do well.
Well done.
So that's always positive. But yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you for coming too.
All right.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
And that brings us to our next slide, which is an update from city assessor Doug Flynn regarding the upcoming reassessment process. Ms. Bogart.
Hey, I'm going to let Mr. Flynn introduce himself, that he's our new city assessor. He's only been here a couple of months, I think. Uh, so take it away.
Since mid-May.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure and an honor to be in front of you all today. Uh, so this is a twenty twenty-four real estate assessment process and status update for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six real estate assessments that'll be coming out effective January first of next year. Of course, I'm probably going to tell you a lot of things you already know, but in case for the, uh, public, it's also listing, per Virginia law, all real estate, except that which has been exempted by law, shall be subject to taxation. And the Virginia law specifically identifies the International Association of Assessing Officers as one of the named professional organizations that prescribes and promulgate standard assessment procedures and practices. And of course, the City of Stanton Real Estate Assessments Department, we follow the guidelines of the I double A O and are a member of the Virginia chapter. Per Virginia law, assessed values are to be a hundred percent of fair market value. However, assessors generally like to aim for a less aggressive amount, around ninety-five percent, because of course you're going to have a spread of allowable spread of ten percent below or ten percent above of the level of appraisal. Uh, so what is market value? An abbreviated definition is that value or price that a willing seller, willing buyer in an open and competitive market, without it being under any duress and acting prudently, knowledgeable, would typically go towards. And of course, not all residential homes or commercial properties are for sale. So how do we come up with that? We use I double A O, we use mass assessment, which is a larger scale than if you had an individual fee appraisal that you may do for a bank or, uh, a home refinance or a purchase. Uh, number one most important aspect of assessments is accurate property records. And with this, there are three approaches to value, sales comparison, income approach, and the cost approach. Now, predominantly, single-family homes in all your subdivisions, in rural or agricultural, they're going to be on the sales comparison approach. And with that, a rising tide lifts all ships, and so, and conversely, a receding tide will lower all ships. So we're looking at the, the sales to set, we're looking at specific neighborhoods of like and similar properties. And with that, we're, we will make adjustments for age, square footage, uh, whether construction quality, certainly location, uh, if the house has extra decks, patios, garages. Uh, looking at commercial properties are going to be generally on the income and sales comparison approach, uh, with some that with a fewer sales, more, and specialty-type properties rely on the cost approach and backed up the sales comparison. All right, so the City of Stanton currently has eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-one parcels, with a current assessed value of over three point three billion. Uh, now as you all talked about the tax base, currently residential is around eighty-two percent of your tax base, and commercial industrial is around, uh, nearly sixteen percent. So the sales that we'll be looking, and market data that we'll be looking at for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six assessment, be everything that took place in twenty-three and twenty-four. Yep. From twenty to twenty, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, there was a fourteen percent increase of median values of, of, of the residential sales prices. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, you had a six point six nine percent increase. And so far, from January twenty-third, from January twenty-three to current of May twenty-four last recorded, you've got five hundred and twenty-seven residential sales, which will put a uh increase of average sales price from last reassessment cycle to current is seventeen point four five percent across the board.
I know.
And so the average sales price of a house is around two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred since January twenty-three. Currently, we got, uh, we have seven commercial properties that are for sale. And of course, some uh product, uh, projects we were just recently speaking of was like the opening of Crossing Way, that's going to obviously open up a lot of uh possible commercial ventures out that way. And Middlebrook Apartments, people have spoken about Wawa, and recently a Firestone Retail that opened. And everybody knows the inventory of available homes is very limited, uh, when they do come on the market, they get snapped up rather quickly. Uh, however, some of the good news is the mortgage rates have been trending down recently, and there is increasing reason to hope and expect that the Federal Reserve will make an interest rate cut in September. And that'll, hopefully, some of the people that own homes that maybe have been on the sidelines, ready to get into the market if they need to relocate, maybe that'll entice them to come up off of some of their properties. And of course, to make home affordability a bit, a bit uh within more reach of people. So currently around about today, the current thirty-year fixed is around six point three seven five. Hopefully, it'll be cut another quarter to a half percent, I would hope, in September, we'll see. Um, and you have any questions or comments?
Uh, sir, if, if I get my new assessment.
Yes.
And I don't agree, and I want to come and tell you how awful my house is. What is your preferred immediate way for that to happen? If you could run through briefly the, the, the process for questioning that?
Absolutely. Well, whichever is more convenient for you. Give us a call, stop in, talk to us, and explain aspects of your home, have, does it have deferred maintenance, uh, are there issues going on with it? We'll, we'll listen to you if you have evidence or, you know, if there are things going on with it, cost of cure, if you got uh estimates of what needed to be fixed, we'll certainly also offer to come out and make a field inspection of your property, don't have to allow us to come in the property, but if you, if you do, we certainly will, and uh.
Sir, have you looked into an online process for um, for this?
As far as having the appeal process?
Yeah.
We've discussed that numerous times, and I think the reason we don't do that or don't encourage that is because sixty to seventy-five, or I'm not sure of the percentage, but a lot of times if you, the homeowner calls, discusses, get lots of their thoughts out on the table, we can discuss the process, they understand the process, we can discuss sales that have taken place, and usually most of the time, that can be taken care of without, you know, them having to go through the process of filling out a form or doing something online, just discussing it and having a conversation solves most of that.
Are you excited about the upcoming assessments?
I am, I'm very excited. I, I enjoy it.
Well, we welcome you to stand. Yeah.
I love being here, it's a pleasure.
You know, we thought after our last, you know, two years ago, after that massive jump that uh, we thought we were looking possibly at a decrease this time, but it does not look like, if you say seventeen percent over assessed value.
Not quite yet.
Over two years ago, yeah.
Some of the volume of sales has, the volume may have decreased a bit, but the actual sales prices have not, yeah.
Right.
Got it.
All righty.
Guys, just a hint, think about keeping taxes lower.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed meeting, please.
Mayor Claffey, I'll move, I move to enter a closed meeting for the discussion of the performance of the city manager and the city attorney pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three, seven, one, one.
Motion is on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Kessker, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will return at seven o'clock.
All right, we've got twenty minutes.
Good evening, it is a couple minutes after seven, and I apologize for being late, we had a closed session, and uh, we need to come out of that first before we start on the, this evening's session.
So, Mayor Claffey.
Miss, oh, okay, go ahead.
I moved that council reconvene in an open meeting and certified to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closing meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kessker, could you call a roll?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, that takes care of a little housekeeping, and that brings us to a uh, a call to order for the regular meeting of the August twenty-second. Everybody, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And our invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Councilor Arrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, now, by the order, and we do this alphabetically, uh, the next time I'm, I'm doing this will be in the middle of winter, I believe, um, so as we move forward in the fall, uh, and we're starting to get just a tiny bit of chill in the morning, or as I call it, the comfortable season. Uh, but uh, I want us all to remember, uh, that things get more difficult for those members of our community who are unhoused. Um, there are organizations helping them, like uh, the Warm Shelters, they're starting to operate in Stanton as well. If you are a member of a church that could uh help by providing space for the shelters uh in our city, that would be wonderful if you can reach out to them as well. Uh, Valley Mission fills a critical need as well, they have, uh, I know they have an Amazon list going, uh, they can help guide what to donate, uh, typically socks, not crayons, things like that, uh, it's not always what you think. So I encourage anyone with the means to reach out and please help those less fortunate members of our community as times get more difficult and nights get more cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to a uh certificate presentation for Caleb Gilbert. Would Caleb please come forward?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, tonight we have a special guest, and look at the sign.
Wow. Caleb Itzberger than you are.
No, really.
Set it right down there in front, we'll get out of there in a minute. And this is going to be presented to Caleb Gilbert for winning the twenty twenty-four All-American Soapbox Derby World Championship.
Oh my God. Wow, thank you.
He took first place in the super stock division, so not only is he here to share this, but we have a certificate of recognition presented to Caleb Gilbert for exceptional achievement in the twenty twenty-four All-American Soapbox Derby World Champion, July twentieth, twenty twenty-four, so.
All right, go Mayor.
Caleb, where was that held? Where was that held?
Akron, Ohio.
Okay.
And where was it?
Akron, Ohio.
Akron, Ohio, oh, okay.
You understand you're a student, you go to school here in the system, where?
Oh, great.
Made somebody happy tonight.
It's amazing. Yeah. This is awesome. I remember my brother doing soapbox dirty. I know he has. There's all Steve.
One more, hold on, hold on, one more.
That's a great way to start. That's a great way to start a city council meeting.
That's cool.
That's very cool. Very cool.
That is cool.
Yep.
That's the fun stuff. All right, let's see, mayor's report, um, very brief, last Friday night I was invited out to the uh museum in Verona for the twenty-ninth uh division of the, the veterans, and they participated in both World War One and, of course, D-Day. And they had a reunion, and they had eighty people here, and uh, from all over the state, uh, lots from Baltimore, Philadelphia, some Florida people there, and they asked me to make some opening comments and welcome, and uh, I said, well, I think we need to have this convention every year here, so they all stayed down here at the uh Hotel Twenty-Four for, spent a lot of money in our city this past weekend, most impressive. And then they had a uh, they're putting a memorial up of the Muse Argonne Battlefield in World War One, and evidently a park was created in the thirties, uh, right beside the river where the Muse River, where this uh battlefield, uh, where eleven thousand uh soldiers lost their life in one day. And they say was uh, as uh, more manpower was lost on that day since uh, in any other day, since Pickett's charge at Gettysburg. And uh, so anyway, the French people had created a park and built it ready for this memorial, and World War Two came, and there was never an opportunity to put this memorial up. So this group of guys is uh funding it, and uh, pretty amazing. They raised twenty-two thousand dollars in four minutes.
My, four minutes?
Four minutes while I was there, and I was like, you, you just, you can't believe what goes on in this country, so uh, it's a good bunch of people that came to Stanton, so we invited them back next year, so uh, hopefully they'll come again, but it's pretty impressive. That's my only report, any other reports from members of council?
Mayor Claffey?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to, once again, bring up VPAS, the uh, the Valley Program for Aging Services. Um, I attend their monthly uh aging in place meeting as much as possible, and this past meeting was about Medicare navigation, and VPAS offers free Medicare navigation for anybody who is approaching Medicare age, in that age for, uh, open enrollment is starting. So I brought some VPAS brochures, you can pick one up after the meeting, but um, these are objective staff members that help you guide, they are not insurance people trying to sell you extra add-on policies, so it's a super valuable service that's open for free to uh members of our community. Um, I attended the school board meeting last Monday, um, first time all summer, because I was out of town for the last two times, and uh, listened to uh discussions of what we're going to listen to tonight, listened to Ms. uh, Ms. Warren, to talk passionately about her school, and uh, Dr. Smith talked passionately about the, the schools. Um, and I attended the Valley Alliance for Education, um, celebration the other night with these, these current, these folks over here, and so I saw a bunch of teachers, thirty-two teachers, win almost forty thousand dollars worth of grant for innovative classroom, innovative creative classrooms, and uh, saw Ms. Mooneyham be uh recognized as Stanton City Teacher of the Year, and she's a business and tech teacher doing amazing, incredible, cool, hands-on, real-world activities with her students. And I just wanted to mention, I was at the library advisory board meeting last week, and since you requested a, a, an update on this, if you go to the library and you look to the right, um, where there will be a, a future terrace uh there for uh community activities, uh, the Friends of the Library is planning and implementing that project, and you'll see that's already, some trees have been taken down to begin the process of construction there. And I want to give a shout out to Williams Brothers, because uh, Williams Brothers Tree and Lawn Service donated their time to do that uh, that tree work uh, free of charge, so thanks to them for being a good friend to, to the library and to this community. That's all I got.
Did you have the dates, did you have the dates of the Medicare open enrollment?
That, uh, just.
You go ahead.
Yeah, just for uh, for those of our senior citizens that are eligible for uh Medicare enrollment or the Medicare D enrollment for drugs, uh, or those through disa, being disabled or eligible, uh, it, those dates are starting October the fifteenth, and they run through December the seventh. Uh, that's when you can go online or go to some uh, person that is actually doing that job or helping uh, maybe a, a, an advisor, whatever, that they will pick, um, they will help you pick the, the best plan for you for, to get your drugs, or even through what they call the Medicare Gold, not only does the drugs, but also helps you choo, choose a plan, uh, where you can see your doctor, uh, help in hospitalization type thing as well, so just keep those dates in mind for those that are also listening, uh, October the fifteenth through December seventh.
Very good. Other comments from members of council?
Um, Mayor Claffey, I'd just like to share that um, I attended the uh, This Is Home um photojournalism project, uh, documenting the individual stories and uh the complexities of, of housing insecurity in our area. Um, this is a project through the Community Foundation, um, today at the library and last.
15th through December 7th.
Very good. Other comments from members of council?
Um, Mayor Claffey, I'd just like to share that, um, I attended the, uh, This Is Home um, photo journalism project, uh, documenting the individual stories and the complexities of, of housing insecurity in our area. Um, this is a project through the community foundation, um, today at the library and last night at the library, Chris Lassiter hosted this series just to present, um, the work of Kate Simon, who's here tonight. And, um, it was just a, an incredible discussion just to, to have better awareness of the issue and, um, just what, uh, what the communities, you know, what everyone's, everyone's facing individual, individual challenges that leads to certain unfortunate outcomes in their life and just what we have to consider to, to help all those and raise them back up. So I, I really appreciated that work and the work of the entire Saul Housing Project that's been in the works over the past year. And just wanted to share with everyone that the next event for Saul Housing is coming up September 4th. It's the start of the action work sessions where they're going to start creating community groups of industry experts to let's take the information we've gathered over the past year and start coming up with some, some plans that we can put into action to address this issue.
Very good.
Adam.
Anyone else? All right, moving right along. Brings us to our regular meeting and we're going to start with the consent agenda. Per procedure memorandum number 14 is the policy of city council to have routine non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If a separate item of discussion is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed on a regular meeting agenda?
No, sir. But Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I will abstain from this vote as I was not present at the last, uh, meeting. So just to make you aware of that.
All right, you were talking about approval amendments, yes. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Motion has been made, is there a second?
A second.
Second vote, Councilor Campbell. Mr. Kessinger.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that brings us to the topic that has everyone here tonight. And then it's a discussion of a request by city schools for city council authorization of Virginia Public School Authority Fall 2024 application for Shelburne renovation phase two. Ms. Beauregard.
Yeah, so just to quickly introduce this item, on August 12th, um, at the regular meeting, the school board passed a resolution requesting the city council issue general obligation school bonds for school purposes, um, basically for the Shelburne Middle School Phase Two project in the amount of 6.982 million dollars. The application deadline for this is fast approaching on Monday, August 26th. So it was necessary to come this evening and, um, review this item and discuss this. Dr. Garrett Smith is here this evening. He will first present the request and answer any questions, followed by Jesse Moyers, our chief finance officer, who will review the financial implications of this request and answer any questions on that as well. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Welcome and, and welcome to school board. Does the school board wish to convene as a, as a meeting?
I don't think so.
That's fine.
I don't think so.
Welcome, glad to have you all.
Well, we appreciate it. Uh, good evening, Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Darby, members of city council. Thank you for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. I think to start out this presentation, I want to provide a little bit of historical context because even though city council members and school board members and staff kind of know the history of, of this, um, I'm not sure everybody in the room kind of knows how we got to this point here tonight. So I'm going to do a quick little review here. We started on this project four years ago in 2020. We knew that in order to start a renovation at Shelburne Middle School that we had to get our maintenance department out of the basement, which lots of people have heard, our maintenance department was in the basement temporarily for 50 years. And that when the noises got too loud or the fumes started coming up through the floor, we would have to evacuate classrooms and it just, it just wasn't an acceptable learning environment for our children or for any children. So our, our first swing was for building 126 at Stanton Crossing, which was the former operations center out there at the, uh, the old Western State. It was the last building to be demolished at Stanton Crossing. And we did have city council members at the time come and tour, um, tour the building, which we appreciated and it gave lots of hope and optimism to our maintenance staff who are excellent. But in the final analysis, uh, we were, we were voted down and the building was demolished. At that time, we said by far, we think this is the least expensive option and it's going to cost more if we're not able to get this building. So, um, so that's kind of, you know, where we started four years ago. So we continued, uh, to look for a place. We found a temporary place right now for our maintenance department and that allowed us to at least start this journey of a Shelburne renovation. At the start of the, uh, the journey on this project, we did have sufficient funding. The estimate for the project was 10 or 11 million dollars. Now it's about 15 million dollars. It, it takes so much work to get to the start of a construction project, as everybody knows, even to get to that first shovel in the dirt. And then over that time, the problem is for schools and school divisions, uh, we all are working on the same deadline with federal money, competing for the same vendors. There are still supply chain issues and costs continue to go up. So, you know, that was not in our control, but that's kind of where we landed. We have from the beginning, um, always wanted to get this project done at the least amount of cost to the city and we continue to try to do that. We applied for a school construction, um, assistance program grant, an SCAP grant, but didn't receive it. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, um, later on in the presentation. Uh, we were super optimistic about a one cent sales tax that was eventually vetoed by Governor Yonkin. That bill had bipartisan support coming through and, and we, we were surprised that it didn't, it didn't make it or that that veto wasn't overridden. But we do appreciate, uh, at that time, the city council unanimously passed a resolution that would support putting that on a referendum if it did pass, which as I said, ultimately it didn't. We fast, so then, um, last year we had two joint, uh, city council, school board budget meetings on January 25th and again on April 11th. And we asked to be considered to be included in the JDR courthouse bond. That's reflected in the minutes from both of those meetings. One of our school board members inquired afterwards and our understanding is that that request wasn't considered, um, by the city council as an entire body and that discussion didn't take place. So we fast forward to, uh, late July and the Virginia Public School Authority announced that they were opening the window on their, uh, construction bond pool with a very tight turnaround of August 26th. This bond money, this VPSA bond money is the cheapest, uh, money that school divisions can attain. It's the best rates that we can get. And so I talked to our school board members, uh, about whether they wanted to pursue that and they did, and they asked me to make a presentation at the August 12th, uh, school board meeting. So that was last Monday. All city council members were invited and we appreciate those who were able to attend. The school board at the end of that meeting unanimously adopted a resolution and directed me to move forward. So the resolution, as Ms. Beauregard said, is now in the hands of our city council. A week ago, uh, the city manager invited, uh, me to do the same presentation that I did last Monday, uh, here again tonight. And I accepted it, uh, even though, you know, I thought it was a little strange because I had just done this presentation last Monday. I, I felt like we needed to accept this invitation tonight because obviously it gives us our best chance for a successful outcome. A couple of days ago, I learned that Jesse Boyer, our chief financial officer for both the schools and the city will present, um, some information about the city's ability to participate in this bond application with us. So, uh, I asked about seeing that presentation since my presentation is the same one tonight and has been public information for 10 days. Jesse was nice enough to come down this morning and share some of the main points from her presentation, but I wasn't provided with a copy. And with that in mind, when I get to the end of the presentation, if anyone has questions, I'll wait until after Jesse's presentation to answer them because I don't know exactly what she's going to say. So these are our three priorities, uh, when planning for the future in Stanton City Schools. We always want to be fiscally responsible and be good stewards of taxpayer money. We want, uh, win-wins for the cities and the schools so that the solution, whatever it is, benefits the entire community and we want to promote equity whenever we see opportunities. So here are a couple of examples of those practices in action. I've got a laser tonight, so I can even move around. So we'll go like counterclockwise. So up in the top left, um, you see fire station number two. It is right, um, if you can look up really closely, sorry about that. You'll see where elementary school in the background. At that time, the city, um, needed a fire station on the west end, uh, to provide emergency services more adequately to our citizens on that side of town. This was a good location for the fire department, uh, and this, and the schools, uh, this was in 2004, the schools gifted the land to the fire department and it's been there ever since. If you look, um, in the next slide here, you'll see, uh, pictures from our firefighters for literacy program. It's tremendously successful. We've got firefighters in reading with our students, um, and the student, and, and learning about firefighting. And it, it's been so successful that some of our firefighters have won state level awards, um, and it was tied back to this firefighters for literacy program. So, uh, just a beautiful partnership with the fire department. We really appreciate it. If you go, um, to the right of that, right here, uh, this, these are where, this was the condition of the tennis courts at Montgomery Hall Park, um, about the time we were finishing up the Stanton High School project. And so, uh, the Stanton High School project, um, when it was finished, we still had some leftover funds. The funds have to be spent on the high school. If you remember, the academic wing of the, of Stanton High School now sits on the old tennis courts. So we needed to find another place for tennis courts and we thought that this was an opportunity to promote equity. Um, and you can see to the right what the tennis courts look like now. I actually drove past them today and the Gypsy Hill Park tennis courts and the ones in Montgomery Hall are nicer. And so we've got lights up. Chris Tuttle just sent me a picture yesterday showing, uh, the lights from last night. It looks fantastic. We love partnering with Parks and Rec on this. But, um, we worked on the project together, but I do have to say that Earl McCray and his awesome maintenance team on their own time, well, on our time, um, did the demolition of those old, uh, ugly courts over there. And they did it by, um, borrowing, uh, heavy equipment and trucks from public works. And our guys did the whole demolition, carried it away, ripped down the fences and everything. And that was how we were able to keep that project under budget. Now that the tennis courts are complete, they're the property of the city. You look down in the bottom left, you'll see the track at Stanton High School. If you've never been on that track, it's very nice. It's soft and easy on your old knees and ankles if you're like me and need that kind of thing. That track almost got cut out of the high school project, but we decided that we needed to keep it for the community, uh, because they use it every single day. And so we made cuts in other places so we could get this, uh, high quality track. We've put a safety fence around it since, as you can see, and we have, uh, lights up there. I've spoken with Chief Williams about it and he, he thinks that's even an added layer of security, having our citizens out there as extra eyes outside the school building. So we appreciate that as well. Um, and then finally, and I don't, I don't really have a picture for this, um, we adjusted, um, our special permission policy this past spring so that city, um, staff, just like school staff can, uh, can access our, um, our preschool program if they want to bring their children to Stanton. They can access our low cost after school childcare, uh, just like our school staff. And now this year, if city staff want to bring their children to Stanton City Schools, uh, they can at no cost. So the only, um, the only people who have special permission, who don't reside in Stanton to attend our schools are city and school staff. We think it's a great recruit, recruiting tool and, and a good perk for working in the city and for doing community service. Every year, uh, the, the state, uh, requires all the schools of Virginia to do a school climate survey. When it came to the prompt, is your school a good place to work out of 131 school divisions? Stanton City Schools teachers, uh, response was 12th most positive, that it being a good place to work that ranked us in the top 10. And that's really what's our number one retention strategy right now is the loyalty of our, of, of our staff and the positive, uh, school climate and culture that we've tried to create. And, um, Michelle Edwards brought up Stacy, uh, Mooneyham and I had the distinct pleasure at the same reception on Tuesday to be able to introduce her as our teacher of the year. But just to share a quick story with you, um, we were really panicked towards the end of last year because, um, Ms. Mooneyham, obviously like all of our highly skilled teachers is highly sought after and she happens to live in very close proximity to Buffalo Gap High School and the brand new Buffalo Gap Middle School. And they were recruiting her to come there with all the bells and whistles of a new middle school. But if you hear the words out of Stacy's, uh, own mouth, she will tell you that she returned to Shelburne, um, out of her respect and admiration and appreciation for her principal, Lisa Warren. So the loyalties keep it us going now against, uh, some, uh, you know, other places that are recruiting with new buildings and new facilities. But, but over time, this is not a sustainable strategy. We are, so we just need to, uh, I just wanted to illustrate that point with that story about Ms. Mooneyham. Go to our next slide here. From, um, 2018 to 2023, 2018 was the first, uh, year we all started, uh, together as a team. We were 105th that year out of 131 school divisions in academic achievement. In the past, uh, we've moved up to 45th that, since that time, that is the most growth and improvement by any school division in the state over a five-year span. We feel proud to be the 10th best or the third best, but we, but like we said, that, that wouldn't be accurate because that would be shortchanging our teachers and staff and it takes every one of them, uh, to do it. So, um, we really appreciate that. So we moved up 60 slots in, in five years and what we've learned through this kind of work is that until, until, um, the practices that you're engaging in start showing up in improved data, whether that's discipline data, attendance data, um, or achievement data, which we've done very well in all of those areas, then what you're doing probably isn't working, you know, and you probably need to go back to the drawing board. But we've kept a consistent approach. We've moved up every year and we believe in Stanton City Schools that great teaching in every classroom is the fastest way to equity and that's our laser focus and we're relentless about that. Our principals will go back to a classroom over and over again until the, uh, the quality of the teaching in that classroom meets their standard. When you look over on the right side again of 131 school divisions, we're number one in improvement. This is very unusual, the second statistic there, several Stanton City Schools had essentially no difference in reporting groups and subject areas by race, ability or socioeconomic status. So that doesn't mean, so that means it doesn't matter if you're black, white, um, economically disadvantaged or not economically disadvantaged, a student with a disability or a student without a disability, everybody's performing at a high level and they're in very close proximity to each other, all those pass rates. The exception to that profile is at Shelburne when compared with our other schools, but we're working real hard to close that gap, particularly with the students with disability subgroup. So we've still got, uh, larger gaps there. In 2018, we were in the bottom third of all school divisions of Virginia in academic performance. We've seen some preliminary, uh, results from last year's scores and we're very excited about them. We anticipate when those are finalized, we will be in the top third of high performing school divisions. We anticipate when those are finalized, we will be in the top third of high performing school divisions in the state. So we went from the bottom third to the top third in five years. Phase one of the Shelburne project is underway and our staff and students and families are doing a beautiful job because we've got displaced teachers, we've got noisy conditions, we've got guests in our building, construction workers everywhere working on things. And, and like they always do, the Shelburne staff has pulled together and they are really making the best out of it. The, this phase one right now is focused on interior renovations. We talked about the removal of the, of the maintenance department. We're turning that back into classrooms, which is what it used to be before the maintenance department moved in. Again, the, the maintenance department is still looking for a suitable facility, but at least we have a leased one right now. This phase one includes enhancing our career and technical education and STEM labs in classrooms, as well as adding classroom space and reconfiguring our administrative offices for improved flow and security. Last Monday, I was able to say phase one is expected to be completed in September for teachers who are affected by this. I hate to break it to you, it's more like October now before, before those classes will be finished. And again, it comes down to supply chain issues and things like that. Even in the office renovation, they're just temporary doors right now. We don't have the permanent doors. They're backordered. So we continue to, to work with those challenges, but, but it's, but it's going well and everybody's working well together. So I was there yesterday. It looks totally different now. I mean, the, the, the progress is, is really incredible. But again, if you look in the top left, you see down in the basement, the former home of the maintenance department is being turned into classrooms. And in one, in one place, we had to raise a floor a couple of feet and another place, we had to take a floor down 18 inches to make these suitable for classrooms. Windows are being installed, so there are actually, there's actually natural light coming in. Down below, you can see some of the outer areas in the back. We're going to capture those for learning spaces by putting a cover over it on both the ground floor and the, and the basement floor. And those will be like opaque coverings that will allow teachers to use those outdoor learning spaces. Up top, you see the main office enhancements again for improved security and flow. And then below and on the right, the ground and first floor renovations for our CTE STEM labs and classrooms. And then you can see right here, hope I'm not hitting anybody with the laser pointer. I don't look like I'm hitting anything. Right here is just a space across from the library and we need learning space. And the cheapest way to get it was to basically wall that space in and turn it into a classroom. So you can see Coach Tibbs is in there temporarily, but he, he'll move into one of the renovated classrooms when it's completed. I did, I had to admit to him today, he's a Dallas Cowboy fan and I went and flipped his Dallas Cowboy helmet upside down when I was in there the other day. I had, I thank you. I appreciate the support. So phases two and three are unfunded at this point. Tonight, we're talking about phase two. It's a multi-tiered addition with collaboration space and seating for up to 350 people. Recreational and event space, collaborative learning spaces, accessible seating, improved storage, and improvements to the stage area at the Hearn Gym. The estimated cost of this is $6.6 million. If we're able to move forward with the addition, it would be the only new construction for the Shelburne project that benefits all Shelburne students and all Shelburne staff. And that's why it's really so important to us. At this point in the presentation, I would like to invite Lisa Warren, our excellent principal at Shelburne Middle School, to come up and give her perspective.
Good evening. Thank you. Before I start our presentation, I just have to give another shout out to our kiddo in the crowd right now, Caleb. We are super proud of him. That's why we work so hard. So Caleb, we see you and we are very proud of you. So just like Dr. Smith, we, I presented this information last week at our school board meeting. And so some of you may have already heard this information, but it's something that we're really passionate about at Shelburne Middle School. And so tonight, you're going to hear about how this space is going to grow and enhance and build new programs at Shelburne Middle School. But then you'll also hear one of the most important reasons why we're asking this at the end. One of the reasons why we think this would be an amazing space to have in our building is, as you know, we love to provide elective offerings to our students that also align with the high school because it's kind of our, our goal in middle school to give the kids a glimpse of what life could be like at the high school so they can really grow into that at the high school. And then with hopes of growing that into a profession or, you know, going to a college or university. And so we have an amazing visual arts art program. It's, it's great. We have an amazing choir program that is starting to grow. We have an amazing band program that everyone knows about. Last year, our band was selected by the state as an eighth grade band to perform at VMEA Conference, which is a musical performance conference and our division supported that, our community supported that. We took not only the kids who were performing, but the kids who actually were the ones that sent the performance in. So we took two separate grade levels to this conference so that they could showcase their awesomeness. Our school board went, community members went. It was just really powerful. So we're really proud of the band program that we have. This is going to be our third year of bringing back the musical. It's an amazing opportunity for our students who are interested in that. We are also going into our second year of offering kind of what we call mini one act plays. We know at the high school, they do an amazing job with the one act plays. And so this is our second year of kind of offering a mini version of that. And so we have all of these great things going on. But the reason why this way, space, we need this space is because we're not able to be big picture thinkers. We kind of immediately have to limit ourselves because of the space issue. So for example, one of our goals is to make Shelburne a place where the community is proud of, our students are proud of, our families are proud of and our staff. And so anytime we do a performance with the choir or the band, we have to go to the high school to do those performances. And so we go and we're super supportive. But how awesome would it be if we could do those performances in our own building and bring our own families into our own building so that we could showcase our students in a place that they spend probably a lot of time in? And again, just to showcase to the families how awesome Shelburne Middle School is. We did a art showcase last school year and all of the schools in the division participated in and, and Shelburne wanted to host it, but we had to host it on the back of our stage because we didn't have a place to do it in. This space would allow us to do amazing showcases that we could open up to the community. Our, our kids are winning art awards, but their stuff is on the back of our stage. We had families coming in and again, we were really, really proud. But in the back of my mind, I was like, man, we could really be better, like this could be really awesome. And so not having this space automatically limits our ability to provide these resources to our families and our community. The other thing is we are consistently listening to the voice of our students because that's what we're here for is our students. And one of the things that kids consistently ask is, Ms. Warren, when can you bring a theater elective to Shelburne? And we would love to. We actually have staff in our building that could offer theater. So we wouldn't necessarily have to hire anyone, but again, I don't have a classroom space. And in this space, I don't know if you guys have seen the awesome virtual models that you can look at. But the screen, the kind of wall comes down and it could be a theater classroom if we needed for a block or two during the day. So we could, we could offer that theater program for those kids who, who want that experience. It's, it's our goal at Shelburne as a staff to make sure that every student connects to that building somehow, whether it's athletics or fine arts or STEM or just academics, mathematicians. We want every student to feel connected and we feel like this space could enhance our visual and performing arts. When we look at athletics, we are really, really proud of the athletics that we are growing at the middle school. We continue to add athletics every year and really proud of that. Again, thank you, student voice, for always allowing us to know what it is that kids want. We get asked all the time to host tournaments for volleyball or basketball because we're kind of in the middle of Augusta County or other areas that may be coming in. The reality of it is, is again, we go in and we automatically say yes because we want these experience for our students. But then two seconds later, I have to say, but we only have enough space for three or four teams or four or five teams because I know in the back of my mind, we don't have a space to house these teams when they're not playing. And so this could really help our athletics by having a space where when kids aren't playing their basketball game, families can set and, and have a space to set that's not in our super hot gym, that doesn't have AC. But they can go out and sit somewhere and be able to have conversations with their families. This, I don't know if you saw in the virtual tour, we would also have a really awesome concession stand. So we could charge those families and we can get some revenue to then be able to purchase things like new uniforms for our basketball team or football team, or that's upcoming football team, soccer. Hopefully we're going to include soccer soon. So we would, we have all these ideas, but we need the revenue to come in and these kind of things would help with that. Because when you have tournaments, people are coming and spending money. And so that would really help our athletics, but then also help our own budget at the middle school. So that, that's from that kind of athletic perspective. The other piece is first and foremost, it's, it's our responsibility to make Shelburne something that we are proud of. This is my third year. My husband has been in the division for a very long time and is very passionate about Shelburne. I mean Stanton City Schools. Our kids go to Stanton City Schools. They are in fourth and fifth grade, so we know that they're coming to the middle school. But we want family engagement. We want families in our building. We want as many opportunities for families as possible. In sixth grade alone, we want to do four or five parent nights, kind of like the elementary schools do, right? Where you invite your families in and they're show, the kids are showcasing their work. We want to be able to do those things, but the space is just so limited. We had a STEM night last night. Our last year was the first one we've had in a really long time. Ms. Evans, a phenomenal science teacher, ran that program and the first thing I said was, how can we do this for six through eight? And she was like, Ms. Warren, this space is just so hard in order to do it the right way and the safe way. And so we have these things. We did the one act play last year. And because the gym was currently being used in another capacity, we had to do it in the cafeteria. We were super pumped and then we had some feedback from families that was like, it was great, but the performance was on the same level as the seats. So we didn't, if you weren't in the first three rows, you really didn't get to see your kids. And that's not the experience that we want families to have. We want them to be able to come to a place where they can sit down, watch their kids, take pride in their kids. Hopefully that means they'll remain in the city. They'll want their kids to have that Shelburne experience. They'll want their kids to be in Stanton City Schools. And so this space would really help us in that capacity for, for building family relationships and continuing to grow as Shelburne is the best middle school. But the reason why I'm here tonight is not just to talk about how we can grow programs and enhance programs. The question that I've been asked is, how does this impact instruction? How can this space help instructionally? And so Dr. Smith shared with you that Stanton City Schools is making significant growth as a division when it comes to our end of course test. He also shared that Shelburne may not be in that top category. So based on preliminary data, we will be accredited with conditions, which means that some of our subgroups have not met the mastery that the state deems for test scores. And so when you look at that information, one of the groups of students that has consistently been in the red, because they use green, yellow and red, is our students with disabilities. And so for the last two years, we have worked really hard to find ways to help those students feel success. They're one of our most vulnerable populations. They're the reason why we do what we do. And they have made significant gains, but again, we're still in the red. And so this year, we have really put an emphasis, that's our instructional goal for the whole year, the whole school. Our instructional goal is to increase the scores for students with disabilities. We all know, we all know that students learn differently and they need to be taught differently and they need the space in order to do that. So we've really increased our kind of way of monitoring students. So every week, we're looking at data. We're looking at how students, we can go back and reteach those students. Instead of waiting until the end where everybody hears like the SOL bootcamps, we're starting day one. We met this week on PLCs and we were talking about offering small groups to students. And we have a new teacher. She's great. And she said, Ms. Warren, I really want the opportunity to work with these, these kids. And some of them are students with disabilities because I think if I could just spend like 10 to 15 minutes with them and maybe teach them in a different way, I think they can get it. And then I think they'll be ready for the next unit. She was like, but where in the building can I do that? And I laughed and I said, that's a funny story. And so she said, I'll just teach them out in the hallway. And I said, well, we can try to do that. And she said, but these are students that are easily distracted. So every time a kid goes down the hallway, they're going to be distracted. And I said, you're absolutely correct. So this space, again, if you, if you've seen the virtual tours, it can be positioned in multiple ways that we could take these students and get them the extra help they need while also giving the kids who do know how to do the work enrichment opportunities that when they go to the high school or even in middle school, they can start thinking about honors level class, advanced level class. One person can be working over here and then the teachers working with these students that need a little bit of extra time. But we just currently don't have that space. We try really hard not to ask for money. We try really hard to reuse everything that we can, especially from the renovations. Mr. McCray and then another shout out to him. We took all of the stuff that they were going to toss and we were like, no, we could use this here. We could use this here. We could use this here. Every time a school gets rid of something, I'm like, I'll take it. We'll, we'll use it in some way. So when I'm here this evening asking for you to support this, it's because it's my job to advocate for these students and staff and they deserve it. The good news is, is we have the space, right? It's already there. We have the plans. They're already done. The bid's already done and the construction team is there and they're working with us. So we just need your support in this. I recognize that you guys have very difficult jobs, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that our students and our staff deserve this. And then I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. This slide really just kind of supports what Ms. Ms. Warren was discussing, collaborative learning spaces. And, and the videos that Ms. Warren referenced, I'll, I'll show those in this presentation. The pullout spaces for academic interventions that she mentioned, grade level meetings, orientations, open houses, you know, culminating activities like art shows, science fairs, academic performances, econ fairs, performing art shows, plays, musicals and, and you know, extra space for us for, for storage. And, and again, gathering spaces for community events. So that's just to kind of reemphasize the points that Ms. Warren made. Here you can see the front view of the addition and you see it kind of has that crazy walkway. That's to account for the elevation. It has to be that way by code. And in our next slide, hopefully this is going to work right. This is the fly through of the interior. So as you see, it comes, you come straight up to the front entrance. That's where elementary on the right side. As you enter the lobby area, what you'll see is a bunch of round tables. Those are our old cafeteria tables, but they're very useful because, because of the shape and because we can do small group instruction there. So back to Ms. Warren's point, we could have three different special education teachers in there or some of our students who work with social emotional cases spread out in that space. As we come in, you'll see the seats here, the bottom half of the seats are like bleacher style seats and they push up. The break points right about that landing there. And then the top half of the seats are fixed. We're going to start zooming up and looking at it from the top down now. You'll see the big screen speakers and You'll see the big screen speakers and right now you can see that this space is open. So open to those round tables, which we think would be great cooperative learning spaces. Here is it closed off. So you get a vision of what that would look like. Then we're going to come back down the stairs and in a couple of seconds, you'll see that door open up again. And if you look over to the right, it's going to show you how this space can be closed off. If it was an evening event, a community event, we could close it off so just this space would be used. So as you can see, this is a fluid and flexible learning space that can be used for a variety of functions. It's nothing spectacular, but for us, it would be huge. Here's a rear view of the addition. And then we got one more fly through of the rear view. Here it comes. So it's like, it's like a drone, like an animated drone, and you'll even kind of catch part of the roof line of where here as you come around. You can see all the natural light coming into the addition. And if you look real closely, it's not the ocean back there, I promise. But if you look real closely, you can see, here's the renovated C T E area with some of the outdoor spaces. You can see that for just a second there. So we really think that that addition, as we've stated and Ms. Warren stated, really provides a tremendous bang for our buck. That's, you know, that's what we're asking for, that funding for that addition. So I think that the priorities between the city and the schools are much more aligned than apart. If you look over on the left side, this comes right out of the Stanton Comprehensive Plan under Goals and Objectives for City Schools. And I'll just read it to you. In order, support efforts to maintain a quality school system, check. Encourage the continued renovation and upgrade of existing neighborhood based schools, check. And encourage more utilization of schools, school grounds and playgrounds as neighborhood focal points and gathering centers for after hours and community activities when schools are not in session. So I know there's been a little bit of pushback about the idea of pitching this as a community center, but the idea came directly from the Stanton Comprehensive Plan and we're just trying to make it as palatable as possible to city council so that increases our chance for getting approval for this project. So again, you can see the same priorities from the second slide. And if you look on the left column and the right column, they really match up very nicely. So phase two, it's kind of two ways to go here. There are some new construction grants that will roll out in September or October. We don't know the criteria for these grants yet. It's been really hard to get information so far. We do know that the construction grants could be used to pay debt service on any school construction projects completed in the city in the last 10 years. So if we were able to get this construction grants, we could conceivably even make debt payments on the Stanton High School project because that was built in the last 10 years. Speaking of Stanton High School, I know there's a perception among some city council members about the high school debt and how much of a burden that is for the city. We've heard that in joint budget work sessions. I want to let you know that in 2017, you know, I inherited that high school project and the $40 million that went with it. That had been approved by a previous city council in collaboration with a previous school board, actually the one that hired me. The Old Lee High School was in absolutely terrible shape. The city desperately needed a new high school and had for years. And my first job when I got here was to execute that project from start to finish. We didn't have an architect. We didn't have a final design. We had to start from scratch. As we worked on it with that original board, the original school board, the only kind of concept that was in place was a complete renovation. Now, if you don't know, the Old Lee High School was actually a renovated junior high school. So we had high school students in an old junior high school with classroom spaces that were too small, with hallways that were too narrow, with roofs that were leaking, with heat that didn't work, air conditioning that didn't work, and all of those things. Like as I said, the school was just in absolutely terrible shape. So to spend $40 million to renovate an old junior high school, at the end, you'd have a newer looking old junior high school and it still wouldn't have been adequate. So speaking with our board at that time, we had an idea, what if, you know, what if we looked at this a little bit differently? And if you face Stanton High School now from the front, you'll see the academic wing to the left. That is all of our classrooms to the left. And then to the right, we've got renovated spaces for the arts and for our athletics, including adding an extra gym. And so essentially what we got, you know, was a brand new high school. I did have to come back to the city council in 2018 to ask for $6 million more to complete that high school project. So the cost actually went to 46 million. But the city council unanimously approved the extra 6 million at that time. And like I said, the result is a brand new high school. And I think everyone will agree, it's a real asset to our community. It was worth the extra investment to do it right. And it's still an incredibly low price for a high school construction project, incredibly low. And you've probably heard me say it before, you won't find one built for under 100 million. And this was less than half of that. So I had to ask for the extra 6 million in 2018 to complete the high school project. I'm back here again, six years later, asking for essentially the same amount of money to finish the middle school project. So we asked for the extra 6 million. Then 2018, we're asking for the extra 6 million now. And that's really the rest of the project we've been able to finance with carryover, federal funds and some contributions from city council at that time. So it's kind of interesting that 6 million, 6 million, six years later, here we are again, trying to finish a project. I did talk to Nielsen some more about holding prices. If we do get permission to move forward with the addition, and they've informed me that as long as we can get the nod on this before the end of 2024, that they'll be able to hold the prices where they are right now. So we appreciate Nielsen working with us on that. Back to the construction grant. The problem with it is if it's the same criteria as the round of S cap construction grants, we won't qualify. This is due to the fact that in the view of the Virginia Department of Education, the city has ample debt capacity and the condition of our buildings isn't as dire as other more impoverished communities in the Commonwealth. And we don't have commitment to the project from city council. So those are all criteria, if they remain the same, that would work against us. If the criteria change, then maybe we have a better chance. We just haven't seen the criteria yet, but we'll continue to work on that regardless of your decision. We will continue to try to attain that grant and continue to look for the least expensive way to get what our students, staff and community need. To me, this is kind of a fiscal conundrum for us because according to the viewpoint from the V D O E, the city can afford this project. That's why we don't qualify for the grant. But what we'll hear from the city later tonight is that the city can afford the project. So that leaves the school division in kind of an impossible situation right now. Again, there's no moving forward on the bonds without a commitment from the city. That's just not how the law works. We know, and we've heard several times, that the city wants to be an attractive destination for prospective businesses. We feel that Stanton City Schools is doing what we can to support that vision. We hope that we're attractive to families who value education and might want to move to our city, businesses that are looking for an area that has good schools for their employees, children. We think we'd also be an attractive destination for them. The bottom line for us is that the condition of the building at Shelburne doesn't match the quality of our students, our staff, our families, or the level of community support that we have. Our job is to advocate for students and families and our dedicated staff. And all of these people happen to be all of our constituents, both bodies. Our school board members read the news. Our families and community read the news. They see the capital investments that other localities are making in their schools. Now, our mission went higher and there were three members of the original school board that hired me in the room, Amy Darby's here and Bob Boyle and Ron Ramsey, and they can attest to this. When we all started together, we agreed the mission was to make Stanton City Schools as good or better than any school division in the state by any measure that you want to apply to us. We don't know any other way to approach our work and we're still operating with that same mindset. So finally, I want to say that investing in our children, young people, families and staff is the best investment you can make in the long term. So thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like Ms. Moyers to go ahead and...
He says he wants to defer questions.
No, I know. I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Oh, go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah, I just wanted to address Dr. Smith. Yeah. And thank you very much. I heard it on last Monday, but it was good to hear it again and also hear Ms. Warren again. And I have been taking lots of notes that I'd like to add later, but yes, Ms. Moyers is going to present to us tonight about financial implications of a project of this size because what we have to do is make a decision on taking on debt for the city. And as stewards of the tax dollars of all of these citizens all over the city, we have to make that decision based on financial information. So we just have to hear. We asked her to do that for us, to put that together because we're not in a budget season. So we don't know what our revenues are going to be. So it's hard to make that decision with good information. So we rely on the professionals. But I agree with everything you said, but I just wanted to see on what we're basing a decision. But I have a lot more to say after. Jesse.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes, indeed.
Yes, sir. Okay, Ms. Moyers will now talk about the fiscal implications, taking on such debt Ms. Councilmember Edwards was just alluding to.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dr. Smith did a great job of listing all the potential uses of the new addition. I don't think any of us can disagree that the space has a lot of potential and will benefit Shelburne students, staff and potentially the community members as well. However, it's my job and my duty to our citizens and the city itself to make sure that every request and or decision that is made on behalf of the city is done so by practicing financial prudence. And this is especially true when issuing new debt. Now, I'm in a unique position as I'm the CFO of both the schools and the city. I understand the importance of the addition and many different ways in which the space could be used by our students. But if the usefulness of the new addition was the only consideration, then this would be an easy decision. Unfortunately, you cannot make this decision solely based on the fact that the space could be used in many ways. In the spirit of financial prudence, I'll be running through some of the important financial considerations so that council can make a well-informed decision, one that will have budget implications for the next 15 years. I'm going to review our current general fund debt and debt service, the budget impact of issuing new debt, and competing projects and priorities. This area graph shows the outstanding general fund debt with the schools represented in the burgundy color and the city of Stanton in the gold. The two peaks are the two new debt issuances. One was in 2019, the high school debt, and the other was in 2024 for the courthouse. You will see after the issuance of the new courthouse debt, school debt still represents about 64% of all outstanding general fund debt. The city currently has approximately $70 million outstanding in general fund debt. The next slide is the school funding formula that was agreed upon August of 2022. This formula relies heavily on personal owned property taxes with 53% of the property taxes being designated for school operations. This will be important to keep in mind if a tax increase is considered in order to support new debt service. There's also a smaller percentage of other local taxes in the formula, excluding meals, sales and lodging, which are more susceptible to economic changes. You can see from the line graph that school funding has been steadily increasing with the exception of the two fiscal years during the global pandemic. There was a decrease in funding during the pandemic, which was partially offset by the city transferring $1.6 million of their pandemic funding to the schools. There was also a special appropriation by city council in January of 2022 of $2.5 million. You'll see this appear on a later slide as the schools elected to use this money toward the Shelburne renovation. I believe that both city and schools are thankful for the formula that is in place because it takes the subjectivity and the guesswork out of determining the local contribution for schools. I also want to stress that the city and school collaboration is very important to the city as well. First of all, we have a shared human resources department. We also share a finance department that includes accounts payable, cash management, financial reporting, grant accounting, payroll and procurement. This is a very unique arrangement that very few localities have. Other collaborations are the field maintenance and supplies and use of equipment by the parks and recs, since a lot of the athletic fields are located in our parks, discount on the H A R T program for employees and space at public works for bus parking, and the use of the second floor of city hall for the school admin offices. So I'll run through this real quickly because it's Dr. Smith already reviewed it. Phase one is the classroom renovation and admin space renovation and the additional C T E classrooms in the basement. That phase is fully funded. The request for debt service of 7 million is for phase two. The estimated annual debt service, assuming a 15-year life and 3.23% interest is about $600,000 a year. There is also phase three that is currently in the school C I P for $32.5 million, scheduled for design in F Y 28 and construction in F Y 29 that remains unfunded. So regarding the request for debt issuance, the application is due on Monday. If you were to approve the application or prove the city manager to sign it, we would have to hold a public hearing on September 12th and then consider the resolution on September 26th. The closing date is scheduled for October 30th. I would like to remind council and the citizens that are listening that the city has invested some money into the Shelburne renovation. To date, it equals about $4.7 million of city funds. The first amount is the $1.5 million that is from the school's fund balance. These are leftover local contribution funds that were not spent. The city allows the schools to keep 100% of those for capital improvements. $2.5 million special appropriation by city council from the F Y 21 city carrier funds that the schools decided to use for this project and $733,000 that was transferred from the city C I P into the school C I P. The other funding sources was $1.6 million from the state and a little over $2.8 million in the S R three funds for a total of $9.2 million available for all phases of the project. So I need to clear up a misconception about the city's ability to issue additional debt. And to do this, I need to explain the difference between debt capacity and debt affordability. Debt capacity is how much debt you can take on based on your financial strength and your stability. Guidelines for debt capacity are set forth in the state code and in the city's financial management policy. The city's financial management policy was adopted in 2014 and measures our capacity using three different ratios. If we're only looking at debt capacity, then yes, the city has the capacity to issue $45 million of debt according to our own council imposed policy. If you look solely at the state statue, it's a lot more. It's about $205 million. However, the issue facing you tonight is not one of debt capacity. The issue facing you is about debt affordability. Debt affordability is your ability to make the annual required payments on the debt of both principal and interest. It's the same issue that caused us not to include additional debt for schools when we issued the courthouse bonds. The schools requested in January to have the debt for this project added on to the debt that we issued for the courthouse. However, we were struggling to cover the debt service on the courthouse and needed to keep the principal amount borrowed as low as possible. It's been communicated... to keep the principal amount borrowed as low as possible. It's been communicated that issuing additional debt was not affordable at this time. Taking on additional debt without careful consideration of the city's ability to repay can lead us down a path of financial instability and hardship. Debt can come at a heavy burden if it outpaces our ability to generate revenues. Our annual fund debt service is the highest it's been in a long time, maybe even ever, at approximately $7 million per year.
You say, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Is the debt service on?
Yes.
The 70 million total?
Seven million is the annual amount for 2025. The city is not currently able to fund its entire general fund debt service from the general fund transfer, and we must rely on our savings and the bond fund in order to make the bond payment in 2025. The city needed to pull almost $1.2 million from our savings to pull, to pay for the courthouse bond in fiscal 2025. To put this in terms of your own household budget, deciding to issue new debt would be the same as having to take money out of your savings account to pay for your mortgage and then deciding to buy a new car and taking on additional debt. So one might think it wasn't financially prudent to take out what we equate to a mortgage on the courthouse without the income to pay for it, but that was a very intentional and thought-out decision. As you are aware, the city of Stanton is under a court order to operate our own juvenile domestic relations court by the end of 2025. We worked very hard to keep the amount needed to be borrowed as low as possible by using local funds that we saved and by using ARPA funds for the purchase of the parcel and the design of the building, ultimately allowing the city to achieve a 15-year term, reducing the total interest to be repaid on this bond by almost $10 million when you compare it to a 30-year term. The city has approximately, approximately $4.5 million in the bond sinking fund balance, which is our savings, and the decision was made to use that to help make the bond payment on the courthouse debt. This kept us from having to significantly raise tax rate to cover the debt payment on the courthouse. This will continue until FY '29, when a portion of the 2021 bond refunding is paid off and the city's debt service decreases, which is represented by the area chart there between '28 and '29. Looking ahead into FY '26, we already know that there are several factors coming our way that need to be taken into consideration before committing to additional debt expenditures. The largest being an increase in the local contribution to schools, which is based on the current bud, funding formula. The increase will be approximately $1.3 million. This is a larger-than-normal increase for the second year in a row, and it's a direct effect of the significant increase in the real estate tax assessments in 2023. The next line, we have been talking about this for the last couple of years, and it's finally going to be upon us. The 10-year Harrisonburg-Rockingham County jail buy-in ends in 2025, so 2026 will be the first year that the city does not have that operating revenue line. That has been in our budget since that agreement was put in place about 10 years ago. The associated annual debt service of a potential $7 million bond is approximately $600,000. And the next two items relate to the operations of our courthouse. Though we'll need another $200,000 for the additional sheriff's office staffing. A lot of that staffing was added in the '25 budget with two positions in July and three in January. And then in FY '26 budget, we'll have to pick up the other half of those two, three that started in January and another 1.5 positions starting in July of '25. The operating expense number is an estimate at this time, and that will include custodial staff and utilities for the building. We do not know what exactly what that number will run us. So the city already needs about $2.9 million, or the equivalent of almost 10 cents on the real estate tax rate, in the new rev, uh, in new revenue before we even begin to address cost of living increases for city employees, increases in operating expenses, or increases in outside agency funding, outside agency funding or jails, detention center, social services, and all those other shared services. So other considerations that you might want to think about are the fact that our capital improvements plan and critical equipment replaces rely on leftover funding to be able to budget or fund these items. Capital improvements are large projects that include renovating or constructing facilities, infrastructure needs, including water and sewer and other utilities, roads, bridges, sidewalks, major equipment, greenway projects, bike and pedestrian plans, and other large projects. Council must also consider that this project competes with other city priorities listed in the 2024 Stanton Plan. There are several priorities in the plan that are currently unfunded or underfunded, including public safety facilities, west end revitalization, union town improvements, affordable housing, and aging infrastructure. The single biggest challenge in issuing new debt right now is there are no current revenue streams to support a new debt issuance. We are relying on our savings and our debt fund sinking balance in order to pay the courthouse debt payment. The debt service fund, which is our savings, does not have the capacity to absorb, absorb any additional debt. Therefore, if council wants to support issuing a $7 million bond to fund phase two, then two, one of these two options need to be exercised. The first option is an additional tax increase of a little over 2 cents on the real estate tax rate on top of the 8 cents needed for the school contribution increase, the courthouse, and to cover the jail buy-in ending. Please remember that, that, that increase does not include any city budget increases other than those that I just mentioned. Option one would require us to amend the school funding formula in order to specifically set the tax increase aside for the Shelburne debt service, since 53% of all property taxes are designated for the school operating funding formula already. The second option is that the city could take the 3 cents on the real estate tax rate that was set aside in 2024. These are the amounts that we're funding in our CIP, and re designate two of the three, which include the library, union town improvements, and west end revitalization, and redirect two of those three to the new Shelburne renovation. My last slide reviews the advantages and the disadvantages of delaying a decision on issuing new debt. Potential advantages are you will be able to take a holistic approach to capital improvement planning and spending. The city has many competing capital needs, and we need to make sure we're considering them all. We will have a clearer picture on the 2025 real estate assessments and the tough budget a year ahead of us with operating our very own juvenile domestic relations courthouse. There is a potential for lowest, lower interest rates. We could have the opportunity to receive a more competitive bid as there was only one bidder on this project. And lastly, we could get some grant funding or other revenue sources to help offset some of the cost. On the flip side of that, there are some disadvantages of delaying the decision. The cost could actually increase. It could be higher if we have to rebid this project. And of course, delaying a decision would delay the delivery of the project. That concludes everything that I needed to review with you, and I know it was a lot. So if you have questions, I can take them at this time.
Jesse, just a quick question regarding the challenges for the next budget cycle. Can you just explain again how the, the increase for the schools' funding from the formula is tied to the, the real estate assessment, right? That's like, it was a lagging effect?
It is a lagging effect. Um, the first year of the 2021, the 2023 high assessments was included in this year's formula, FY '25's calculation, and the second half will be in FY '26. So there's always going to be that delay in when the actual increases roll into the school formula.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse, I'm sorry I've asked you this probably a handful of times, but can you explain what it means that we pull from our savings and we pull from the debt sinking fund? Can you explain what that?
So the debt sinking fund is a special account or reserve that is set up for the payment of debt service. So the, gets funded by a transfer from our general fund, um, through an appropriation of the budget, and we had accumulated $4.5 million into that fund and the savings accounts for debt. Um, so our transfer from our general fund this year is not enough to pay for the debt service in FY '25. It's short by about $1.2 million.
Okay, because this seems like the crux of something that you're trying to say. I'm trying to get my mind around this. So we have to pay our debt, and you said it was $7 million a year on the 70 million total debt that we have. And every year, you're, we're putting aside the money to go into this debt sinking fund, and there is not enough to cover what we currently have?
That is correct.
And so if we were to add this?
So in 2024, we were fully funding our debt, and we actually were able to budget a couple hundred thousand dollars extra because we knew the courthouse was, debt was coming. But now the courthouse debt has been taken out.
Right.
And the debt service is starting in '25. We do not currently fully fund our debt. And so we need to pull or use $1.2 million out of the sinking fund balance.
So we take 1.2 out of the four point?
Yes. If we did not do that, it would have been a significant real estate tax increase.
Right.
Let me point out, let me point out something. Tying it all together, we're in a very tight budget, and, and we, we are aware that we're having a tight budget. We've been trying to sell Stanton Crossing property for many years. It has been one of our major things. That's costing us about a million two a year in interest, in penalty, in principal payments.
The point I'm trying to get, or understand.
We're almost at the end of paying Stanton Crossing off, but if we were to get the development out there on that land, we would have additional tax bases coming in. But we don't have that done yet. We know it's coming, but we are, we're holding off until we get that Stanton Crossing sold. Now, we're getting all the infrastructure, the roads, the water, the sewer have all been done through grants. It's not like it's costing the city, but we're playing a waiting game, hoping that we can eventually realize the benefits of that land. The next thing is the assessment is going up in January, folks. Well, we don't know it's going up, but we know we're going to do assessments on real estate in January, which is about six months away, and we do not know what's going to happen. We heard the report tonight in our work session for the first time. We met our new assessor, and he sees houses currently selling above their current assessed value, which means we could have an increase coming there. And the third factor that's involving that is such a big deal is the courthouse. We were mandated into this position by Augusta County taking the court to Verona. We are not allowed to go and share their courthouse in Verona. We have to have our own, and we must own the property. We can't lease it. We can't borrow it. We can't use the existing one. We must own our courthouse. And we do not know how much it's going to cost us to build this wonderful project we have going on in the West End. We got a very favorable rate. We jumped on it. We have started the project. We have our fingers crossed. Everybody knows what happens when you do new construction. There's always overages. So we are in a very, very tight budget situation, but it's not an impossible one. It's one that we've thought out, and we are where we are. Unfortunately, where we are did not include a $7 million request outside of the budget cycle. That is what has put us in this dilemma. Also, please be aware of the fact that the sheriff's department is not sure that they're going to be able to get up to speed by 2025, and they're asking for additional monies because whereas we always shared sheriff services down here at, at Johnson Street, you know, with Augusta County, we will now have to fund all of that ourselves. Again, tight budget constraints made this year's budget a challenge, and we passed it in April. We put it into effect on July 1st, and the requests have been coming since July 1 that people need more money. And we're not in a situation where we have excess funds at this time. So it's not helpless. It's not hopeless. We're just being very, very careful to not spend money we don't have.
Yes, Ms. Moyers. Um, first off, I would like to just make a, a statement that, well, a lot of different statements, but I want to support what Dr. Smith said about our aligned priorities because when I think of the schools, I don't think of the cities versus the schools. I don't see how you can separate cities and schools. The cities is, the schools are part of the city. Um, there's no way to, for anyone to separate it other than to look at the fact, the unfortunate and uncomfortable fact that we're sitting here and you all are sitting there, and every year money has to be asked for to, to, to fulfill the budget. And I am interested in the, the word that you used, and that is holistic approach to funding construction projects because I, I think, I mean, the, the thing is, as if for those of you in the audience that don't know, schools can't levy their own taxes. Schools have no way of, of getting their own revenue other than appropriations from city council. And so I'm interested in looking at ways of generating income for school board to be able to make independent decisions about their spending more and looking at a holistic approach to a school CIP and the city CIP being overlapped so that the goals are absolutely intertwined, and we don't see, you know, we don't see two separate, two separate goals, two separate dreams, visions, whatever, because there's, there, there really isn't any. You can't have the schools without the city, and everything benefits everything else. And, and the fact that we have to do this every year is unproductive. It's unpleasant. It's unfair. It's all of those things, but that's the way we do business in Virginia. So I am very committed to trying to find a way of funding school projects in a more collaborative, and as I think you used the word holistic, which I want you to explain if you can. Does that, did you have ideas to support that?
The idea was not just looking at this one project, looking at all the projects on our CIP and the Stanton Plan, um, phase three that will be facing us in the not-too-distant future, um, instead of just considering one project in a silo by itself.
Oh. Ms. Moyers?
Yeah, of course.
Hold on a second. Um, what, remind me, it's what, 188,000 per one cent on, for the tax rate?
Two eighty seven.
Two eighty seven.
Two eighty seven.
Yeah, almost 300,000.
Or I think it might be up to like 290 now, but yeah.
Yeah, just under 300,000.
Have a question?
Thanks, Jesse. And my question's not, not for you. So, um, so I'm just following up on Mayor Claffey's comments about a tight budget year and then Ms. Edwards' comments to, um, along those lines, like, you know, we come back, we're back here again this year, and it's, you know, there's, there's limited resources and lots of needs. Um, in one of our joint, uh, city council, um, school board budget sessions, Mayor Claffey, Kristin Segal asked about economic development program, uh, economic development, um, projects on the horizon that might be bringing new revenue, um, into the city because it, it seems like more revenue is what we all need.
Absolutely.
Um, and at that time, your answer was that we didn't, you didn't really know of any. And then on one of the Jesse's last slides, it said there's no current revenue source to support a new debt issuance. So, um, so that's really, my question is, is why? Like, why, why isn't, um, why, why don't we have, uh, revenue streams coming in or revenue streams on the horizon that could improve the city situation and the school situation?
We do, and our, and our budget continues to increase year after year. And go back to the slide, uh, the, the slide that shows the increase that the schools have received over the last couple of years. You know, you were at 12 million, you're at 17 million now coming in there. And if you look at our budgets, they went from the low 120,000 to 150,000, 150 million rather, as a city. So therefore, revenues are increasing. Meals taxes increasing. So therefore revenues are increasing, meals taxes increasing, sales taxes increasing. But we have not yet landed our tenant for Stanton Crossing. And it has been a burden on this city since 2008. Long before I was on this council, I ran under the idea we had to sell it, as did Mark. We were saying, we have to move Stanton Crossing because it has been a drain on the financial of this city for, for 15 years. And it's coming to an end. It's developed, go out there and drive on the road. You know, it's, it's beautiful and we're going to get tax advantage from it in the long run. But it certainly has not come yet.
So that, sorry, so, so that leaves the revenue. If, if business is not coming to Stanton, then it's, it falls to the residents. And so it, if that means raising taxes in the spring, if we don't vote, if we don't ask direct Ms. Beauregard to, to move forward with the bond, that would mean looking at it as part of the budget, bringing it to the budget in the spring possibly. And so that would mean coming out of real estate taxes and raising, so that, you know, it's really something we would need, I would like to hear input from residents on that because I would, I would have loved my children to go to a modern Lee High School. My son was the last class to go through Lee High School. My daughter graduated before that. I wish that it had been renovated years before my kids were there. So they would have gone to a beautifully renovated, modern school. I wish that Shelburne had been renovated and remodeled years before my kids attended. And so believe me, I 100% support this happening and finding a way to do it. And it, it appears that the way to do it would be the only revenue source we would have is a tax increase because I don't, I personally am not willing to take the money, the cent that we took, put toward the library, because that's a hundred year old building that is getting a design study needs of renovation or West End revitalization or Union Town. So, so that's what we would be looking at. And that's, that's kind of where we are as a, as a body, as an elected body. Is, is making that kind of decision.
I, I mean, personally, I think it's a great project. My, my daughter is in eighth grade at Shelburne right now. She's the record holder for the roller skate limbo in the past. My son will be there in two years. I, I think this auditorium is wonderful. I see the band director back, well, he was back, okay, there you go, you shifted. Great place for the band to go, great place for, for, to do a theater program on it. One issue I have, I want to see this happen, but is right now also the best climate for it? We've seen problems even on a much smaller scale, like when we wanted to do the bathroom renovations in Gypsy Hill Park. We put that out for bid. We expected it to be about 250,000, 275,000. We had one bid, it came back at $895,000. We said, no, thank you. We're going to hold off. There's a general sense that ARPA funding, the American Rescue Act funding is giving a false economy to construction right now. The courthouse bids were very competitive with three bids on that. And those came in as good as we could have hoped, I think, on that. But to, to learn that phase one got one bid Nielsen and phase two got one bid Nielsen makes me think that this may not be as, maybe in the category is not as competitive as it could have been. I don't know. It might be more later, it might be less later, no idea. Anyone with a bank account right now is getting peppered with things saying, take out a CD right now because the Fed is about to lower rates in their September meeting.
Correct.
Wish I had the money to throw into something like that right now, but that also lowers bond rates as well. That lowers all borrowing rates. So it's right now, next Monday, the best time to leap on to a higher rate right before the changes. It's just, but then again, it could be worse later. No one knows. But we're having a whole lot of strange things happen in construction right now in pricing. So it's hard to say.
I'll just add first, I want to thank Dr. Smith and Dr. Siegel and Ms. Warren for having me to the school last on Monday and getting a tour of the, not only the new renovated classroom space, but actually seeing, and that's when you have just gotten those videos. So that helped tremendously and I 100% support this project. And I'm a little more optimistic. I know it's going to happen and it's going to happen sooner rather than later. I'm committed to that. But just with these unknowns and what we're facing, a project consideration of this magnitude, I mean, we're talking 10% request of our overall annual city general fund. It has to go through the budget process. It has to be considered as a complete picture with the needs of the, of the entire city. I'm still confident that there are outside funding sources, non-local revenues that we can utilize. Even if we bring in a couple of million dollars, that's a tremendous benefit to the, to the city and not having to, to increase taxes as much as we might need to.
Not have to pay interest on that.
And one more thing is through this whole process, and I know it's frustrating. There are tons of opportunities for improved collaboration between both sets of elected officials and school and city staff. It shouldn't be this way. Keep hearing, I don't know how many times I've heard over the past few months since I've been on council that the new formula is working. Obviously it's not, it's not meeting your all's capital needs. We need to develop a plan to make sure we are addressing both operational and the cap, long-term capital needs of the school. Because this is, I know you said this is, this is the last big thing we need for a while, but we have aging infrastructure. We're going to have to invest and keep investing in the schools, just like we have to keep investing in the rest of the city facilities. So we have to come up with a plan for long-term commitment to, to get ahead of the curve. Cause right now we're lagging.
Mr. Campbell, I appreciate your comments, but the, the revenue share agreement I have come up in joint budget sessions and, and said that it's working because it is. And, and like Jesse said, it's not subjective anymore. You know, it's, it's, it's based on, you know, revenue that's already been vetted, been audited, you know? And so all of those things take place, but that's, that's our year-over-year local contribution. And that's different than a one-time capital investment. So those are, those are two separate things.
I understand they're separate, but they need to be considered. Because they're not being considered because we're in this situation where there's going to be, keep being these significant requests. So we need to get ahead of that so we can have the flexibility to accommodate those requests when they are needed.
And, and I was, I was going to, going to, going on to say that, you know, we do again, appreciate the revenue share agreement. But when the city council made the decision to cut the real estate tax by three cents the same year that we entered into the agreement, that hurt our, that hurt our revenues and it hurt your revenues. So, you know, I, I want to point that out. That was less than a year after we agreed to the, agreed to the revenue share agreement and signed off on it. So that was damaging to both entities.
The other side of that, Dr. Smith, is we had a 29% real estate assessment increase. And we came back with a 3% tax rate decrease. The citizens of Stanton paid more in taxes for their real estate in the year after we cut those three cents.
Mayor Claffey, I'd really, you know, I don't think I'm in my area of expertise and I don't really want to be talking about raising and lowering taxes. That's not, I'm really out of my, my, my lane with that. But, you know, I do know that among the 38 and whatever it is, independent cities in Virginia, that Stanton's real estate rate is still among the lowest of all the independent cities. So that's still an, an advantage for our citizens.
Well, I mean, I, I know that Adam and I talked a little bit and in all honesty, of course, maybe Adam and, and there may be some elected new council members sitting in the audience right now. But if we would make this decision, it would basically tie their hands because they couldn't make any other decisions, at least for the next year. Now maybe that, maybe they would like that, I don't know. They said, well, hey, that, that council's tied our hands, we, we can't do anything. So, you know, I, I think we would just, we just need, like, like Adam said, it needs to go through the budget process so that we can weigh everything. And, and like I said earlier, and you know, that's the whole thing. Getting, getting Stanton to grow, getting Stanton to, the Stanton Crossing sold, getting new tenants there, hopefully getting the West End to grow. That brings in new taxes, which is the lifeblood of any city. And that, those new taxes are what is, what would then allow a city council to fund whatever the school would like to do, whatever new CIP projects are out there. But right now we're, you know, it's like Jesse made a very good comment. How do you, how do you take money out of your savings account to pay for your MasterCard? And say, I think I want a new car. You know, I mean, you've got to look at, at your own personal budgeting process. Would you make those kinds of decisions? Well, the seven of us up, up here were, were hired by the, by the citizens to try to manage their money. And we're trying, we're doing the best we can. We, to think that we don't love and want to support the kids in any way we can, don't even try to go there. But we're just trying to make the best of what we were given and to try to do the best we can for every citizen. Please believe that.
I think, I think what I want to say is I appreciate you all giving your report tonight. And, and it is, it's, it's a difficult position for the schools and for the city to be in right now. But a short time ago, I mean, you heard Jesse speak of this, you know, this council made what I believe is probably one of the wisest financial decisions that this city has made in a long time. And that was when we made the decision to actively seek a 15-year note versus 30-year note on the new courthouse. And, you know, that, that's something that I think was a really good financial move for us as a city. And I think that having just gone through that and hearing what you are saying, you know, I want to continue to make good decisions for the city as long as I'm sitting in this chair. You know, when I was sitting in that chair, I wanted to make good decisions too for the schools. And, you know, I think that right now it's the timing that's, that's what I see is the problem. It's not that this isn't something that needs to be embraced. It's just that it's the timing of it. And if, you know, we had the money that was available to do it, then I would fully support doing it. But I, I don't think that right now, at this point in time, you know, just as we've started this new fiscal budget season, that we can move forward with it right now. But I do think that you should look at it as you go forward. Maybe this grant opportunity, maybe you'll get some good news and find out you get it. I hope you do. I mean, I hope that that changes the situation. But then you can go through the process with the budget, starting, I think you start as early as October.
The comments?
I just want to say that I fully support the, the school project 100%. I fully support it. But as stated from Jesse and multiple people, my fellow council members, it's just not this time. I have grandkids that is in the Stan City schools. I have, she has two years to go. And hopefully in those two years, when she gets to middle school, that it will be fully renovated. That's what I'm looking forward to. So, but if we can't afford it to pay for the debt, then that's, we can't proceed right now. But I have hope that it will be done. I'm hopeful, just like Adam, and I want to work together with school board because it's always a us versus them thing. And that's not a us versus them thing. And I don't like a us versus them. So we should always be working together and seeing how best we could support our children. My girls went through Stan City schools and now my grandchildren is going through Stan City schools. I didn't go through Stan City schools. I'm not a Stantonian, but my children did. So that's just what I'm saying. I support it. I want to see everything. But it's just so many things that is rallying for our funding right now that we have to say no to. It's people in our city that is a community that has been waiting for 50 years to get things done in their community that we had to tell them, not right now, but it's coming. So that's what we saying to you all tonight. Not right now, but it's coming.
Well said. I like that. I had a mother that taught at Shelburne and she taught at John Lewis when it was first open. And I have a grandson that's going to Shelburne in another couple of years. He's at McSwain now. And we know, we know what needs to be done. We're not, we're not anti, it's, it's all a matter of timing. I hope you all will understand.
Further comments, Dr. Smith? Ms. Beauregard comments? All right, well then, when that case will turn over to matters from the city, city manager?
I just have one item to talk about the Labor Day holiday. The city schedule, so Labor Day is Monday, September 2. And Beverly Street will remain closed an extra day for shop and dine out, which is always nice. And the bollards will be removed by 7:30 AM Tuesday morning. If you have trash pickup on Monday, September 2, it will be collected on Wednesday, September 4. And the downtown business district, you'll receive trash collection on Tuesday, September 3 and also on Wednesday, the 4th with normal pickup following that. The recycling center will be closed on Monday, September 2 with regular hours on Tuesday, the 3rd. And also the library will be closed on Monday, September 2 and return to their normal schedule the next day on the 3rd. And then of course, city hall and administrative offices will be closed on Monday and resume on Tuesday. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to matters from the public. At this time, we, uh, we'd like to hear from the citizens. It is a time for council to set aside to hear from citizens on a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters in the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk or online at the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I open the floor. Welcome.
So you'd be glad to know I'm not here to ask for $6 million. So my name is Dan Funk. I was here with, with President Jim, he, he split, but with Renee Clark here from the Stanton Maker Space. And we're here to talk briefly about our 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and request property tax exemption. And to begin a conversation about ways we might add additional funding to improve our facilities. I don't know, I, I have this that I'll, that I could read, but I got five minutes. I got, I'm thinking about Shelburne and people learning disabilities. And I definitely grew up with learning disability. I'm pretty severely dyslexic. So I kind of, I, I understand that. I understand, like, we've also talked about the West End and the importance for revitalizations there. So the Stanton Maker Space is located in the West End. It's run by somebody with a learning disability. I've always like needed to have my hands on things in order to learn and do things. And I felt like other people needed a place to do that too. So the Stanton Maker Space like is a, is a catalyst for many things. It's an economic catalyst, an educational catalyst and a community catalyst. And, and I don't mean that in an abstract way. Man, I'm not nervous at all. That's not my verse. Oh, man, thanks. We're demonstratively these things as an economic catalyst, there are dozens of As an economic catalyst, there are dozens of small businesses that are growing out of the Stanton Makerspace. We have many members who support their income building building items for local market stores. Our volunteers help people apply for patents. We've developed commercial prototypes for autonomous robots. We were the workshop for the Black Fires prop builders prior to the pandemic. At least three members of the Makerspace moved to Stanton because there's a Makerspace here. We're an educational catalyst. We partner with the Governor's School, host a robotics team, provide assistance to these bright young kids manufacturing custom parts for their first robotics competition. We partner with Boys and Girls Club, the Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts. We've done laser cutting projects with students. Each and then, like, I guess, like, there as an educator, that's not our core mission to reach out to these people. It just happens. Our core mission was just to to be there as a like a community, like a a community place to to foster, I should read and not talk. Every single day, people come to the Makerspace and learn from one another. We learn electronics, glass cutting, woodworking, CNC, 3D printing, clay throwing. We design board games. We learn how to make our own T-shirts. And some of those things are fun hobby projects, but many of them, 3D modeling, CNC paths, these are deeply needed deeply needed skills in our community. It's serious workflow workforce development. And we are a community catalyst. We are organizing LARP events with Stanton City with, shoot, with Stanton Parks and Recreation, working with Anna Fugati, who's who's been a blast to do these, like, LARP activities with. And we'll be doing more of that this fall. To jump topics, the Makerspace members got together during the pandemic and made 3,000 face shields for the Yesta Medical Center. I got a call yesterday from a mother of a quadriplegic man, and he wants to be able to train his dog by dropping dog treats. And she found a 3D printable structure that she can hang on the side of his wheelchair and he can treat his dog. So we're going to print that for him. Does the Stanton Makerspace measure up to the Makerspaces in larger cities? Are we a real Makerspace? Yes, we offer significantly larger, cleaner, safer spaces than most of the Makerspaces in the U.S. People come to us from Charlottesville and Harrisonburg and Lexington. These other cities don't have a Makerspace, not like ours. Well, the Makerspace last, we are celebrating our 10th anniversary this summer. Do governments typically help fund Makerspaces? Yes. Maryland recently established a Makerspace Initiative Program to create Makerspaces just like we already have in all of their cities all over Maryland. Federal level organizations such as the EDA and NSF regularly award grants for the creation and extension of community Makerspaces. There's a document here I'd like to leave with you about the maker movement. This is from the National League of Cities, published in a study in 2016 that covers a number of city Makerspaces. There were a dozen cities in here and their Makerspaces, and it describes what the benefits So what we do with the money and not the $6 million, what we do with the $3,000 we get to keep if we didn't have to pay taxes? We would love some air conditioning. That's probably top of the list right now for most of our members. But really, what we want to do is make that space safe.
Thank you for your time.
You got it. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Did you have something to leave with us? Excuse me, did you? You can give it to.
Give it to Callie.
Yeah, yeah, give it to Callie. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Renee Clark. I'm not here to talk about animals tonight. I'm a recent member of the Makerspace. I have known about it for a long time, but I never went down there. And so if you've never been there, it is on Johnson and Jefferson, which is where the old corner store used to be. So I would like to just invite any of you to come. They have open houses because, truthfully, I discovered it about three or four months ago, and it's probably the best thing I've ever seen because it's a bunch of people who are very smart and very creative, and they all come in there and help each other. And it's like an innovation hub in a way. It's people helping each other grow ideas, grow STEM education. As by trade, I'm a biologist. And so there are all these people that know things about stuff that you don't know things about. One thing that is coming up that Dan didn't get to mention is that we're going to, we're trying to improve the appearance of the building. It used to be Delmers. So we're gonna do like some murals and try to make it an attraction for tourists. And so that'll help bring people from the downtown, you know, maybe even during Harry Potter, we'll come up that way and help grow businesses and also help grow out towards the West End. So it is a great 501(c), you know, like I said, I'm involved with some other 501(c)s that you guys know. But as far as education opportunities for the community, that area is historically a very underserved community. So hopefully, in us growing this building and growing science and STEM in a community where, you know, they have been overlooked in the past, it will help grow the city even more. So just wanted to put that out there. They do have a good website and Facebook page, and hopefully you guys will come for an open house. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kessinger, anybody?
No, sir, I have no one with their hand raised.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Cindy Connors, 106A Skyline Avenue. I wanted to make a couple of comments about the some stuff in the work session today and to say thank you as a West End resident for this effort to revitalize the West End, the beginning building piece. There's some really concrete action items in there that I believe will make living on the West End better, so I appreciate that. There was a comment, few comments about sort of regulations and guardrails for business, et cetera. I just, what I want to say about is we don't need fewer regulations and guardrails. We need common sense guardrails and regulations. One of the reasons why the West Beverly Street is in the conditions in because of a complete lack of regulation and everybody able for a period of time where business could do whatever, pave all the way to the street or whatever that is. So I just, I just want to say it's not about how many, it's about the quality of the regulations that we put on the businesses there and on the residents, too. And about the assessor, I don't know if, I assume you all remember, the last time we went through the assessments that people went through the roof. There were town hall meetings, there was input, there was the assessor himself had to come for this, came in front of the city council and explained processes, et cetera. I don't want to see us go back to that. I mean, I understand that the housing prices are going to go up, but I was disappointed to hear that we're going to just use the same old process of calling up and chatting about our assessment. It doesn't work. It leads to it being too subjective. There's no concrete rules. Plus, people go to work. I don't know about you, when I was carrying mail, I didn't have time to call during the assessor's hours and chat about my assessment. It's pretty simple and basic and normal in other places to send out a form with your tax assessment that says if you have a concern, fill out this form, you turn it in. There's at least in a paper trail. It's also way controversial for some humans to make that call, whether it should be or not, whether it would be in reality or not. People aren't going to make that that call to the assessor. So I ask that we don't get in another fiasco and that we do this assessment in a concrete, universal, definable way. It's the very basis of what we want to do here. It defines how many, how much tax revenue we're going to get. So it's a really serious process. I hope that we reevaluate that. And and about the school, schools, I just, it's, I feel emotional when I think about the decision. I also understand the practical side. As an organizer by trade, I just look forward to seeing in the next budget cycle a collaborative effort in which both bodies really, I hate the word sell, but I'm sorry, I can't think of a better word at the moment, promote, sell, whatever, get buy-in from this people in the City of Stanton that they need to invest in their community. And we need to revitalize the West End and build Union Town and do a construction in Shelburne and so many other things. And if it takes more revenue, we need to convince the people that that's what they want most. So I look forward to seeing that next year. Thank you.
Don't need other five minutes, just my phone.
Hello, I'm Joanne Jeter from Sunnyside Street. I think I have emailed my support for the phase two of the renovation happening now. I think I just, I appreciate what Cindy just said about that emotion. I feel like there's a grave disappointment that's settled over the room. I think a lot of us are here because we care so much about the school. We know how essential it is for the health of a city. I like Ms. Edwards, that you mentioned that we can't have one without the other. We are a part of each other. And I also appreciated Mr. Campbell, your talk of working together, so that we're not an us versus them. And I hope that we each, each body can be brainstorming ways to be proactive, some concrete ways to to help us come together so we don't get in a situation like this again and that the schools and students and staff have what they need. I think we don't like to be here. So let's, let's, I think, really try to find some concrete ways to make it not so again. Thank you.
Mr. Kessinger, is anyone on the line?
No, sir, we have no hands raised.
Welcome, Ken.
Ken.
Good evening. My name is Ken Venable, 306 Anne Street here in Stanton. I wasn't going to get out, but I have to get out because I love education and I love the Stanton City School System. I understand money, but one thing that we really have to do, and I think I've said this a few years ago, is for Stanton to grow. Stanton also has to have community partners. I know we're looking for money and all like that, but we have to have community partners. I've lived all over different cities where cities have banks that they're community partners, they have corporations that they're community partners that give money to education because the two things, even when I worked with General Electric, it was old saying that progress was their most important product. When I worked with them, we made them change it to people are our most important product. And in Stanton, it should be students are our most important product because they're the future. So I think we have to be innovative to find ways to help education. And I'm going to do all that I can to make sure that we try to make those things happen. We got to think outside the box. I understand grants, I understand everything. I worked in corporate America for 40 years, but you have to have outside community partners. Stanton has all these corporations, and also a corp, a national corporation. You ask them, what do you do to support Stan? What do you support the futures leaders of Stan? And we have to get them to the table because why? They can help the school system, they can write it off. 6.7 million, 6.7 million is peanuts. But we have to bring them to the party also because they are part of Stanton. Any corporations here, I don't care if it's supermarkets, if you look at it, taxpayers work for them. They make profit off of them. But what are they giving back? They're making money. They're not in the red. We're trying to struggle to move on. And if you look at Stanton Crossing, you look at, yeah, that was a big project, and I always called it the elephant in the room. And in my opinion, just looking at it, because I worked in corporate America, it won't be finished for about another 10 years. Because time, the longer that you do things, you miss opportunities. So we're, we're in that mindset. So Dr. Gary Smith, you know, with the school system, I'm going to do all that I can because Stanton is my home. I'm born and raised here. So I want to make sure that we do something, and we got to be creative outside of the normal budget process. Point two, which was in the work session, the Booksy Watch Community Center, that's my school. That's why I went to school. Before I even ran for school board, I laid out the plan for the bottom floor up there. That goes back in 2018. Because I looked at it, a building that the city owned, that nothing was being done. A historic building, nothing is being done. But I looked at it from the point of getting collaboration from outside community partners because you just connect, totally depend on the city's budget. So we have to work in in those veins. And I'm excited about that, that that is included in Will Cockrell's report because I found a book on Fraser and Associates when they did that back in 2007. And if that was done back in 2007, that would have been a beautiful piece on the West End, beautiful. But now, when you look at the cost of doing it, yes, probably going to be three times that amount. But I'm interested in that project because if you look at education, people's hearts bleed for education for you. They will open up if you have a plan. So I want to be working on that also because a plan was already there, it's just going to be updated. So school systems and all like that, everyone has to step up to the plate, everyone. And I'm going to be one that steps up to the plate. And I hope the city does the same, and I hope every business here in Stanton steps up to the plate because we need them for the you who are the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Kessinger, anyone?
No, sir, I have no one with their hand raised.
Anyone else like to speak? Well, I thank all the people that came out tonight. I thank the school board and Dr. Smith for coming out, hearing your presentation, good feedback, and we definitely want to see this happen. So thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.